Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Kristin French and I am in lieu Ms. Herdick. Running the meeting for the ad hoc committee to run our work session today for a special called work session, so I'm calling this session to order. Ms. Herdick will be joining us shortly. Ms. Waters is on Zoom. Reverend Mack is on Zoom. Ms. Darby and Ms. Green are here in person, as is Mr. Kennedy. We also have trainers from CGCS, Cindy Elburne and Cam Warterano, Rodney Jordan, and Raymond Hart, who is the executive director of CGCS. So, we are going to get started and I think what we should probably do is everyone read the survey summary and the community engagement summary.
Yes.
Would you like Ms. Elburne to go over it briefly? To touch on the highlights?
That would be great.
Great, and I think we set up so you can have screen sharing Cindy.
Okay, um, so I think-
We cannot hear Cindy at the moment.
Can you not hear me?
Even though she's not muted.
Yeah.
Hello?
Cindy, I can hear you, so it may be something in the boardroom.
Okay.
So, a little technical difficulty here.
Cindy, I can, I can hear you as well. Can you hear me?
And you guys-
I can hear you. I think-
There we go.
There you are.
We just had to switch off our norm, something stopped working right with our normal echo cancelling, so apologies.
Alright, you're on Cindy.
Okay, so everyone received both, two different reports on community input. The first was the synopsis of the community vision and values survey. And then the other was a synopsis of the notes that you all submitted from your listening sessions that you did throughout the community over the last several weeks. And so, I guess you, you have all had that document to read. I think what I would do is ask what, what, what did you notice and what stood out to you? In those documents?
On both, on both doc, on either document?
On either document.
So, it's a couple of things that stood out to me is, is in the sessions that I did, same kind of things were, were what people were saying, college career, a lot of next step ready, a lot about being on academic grade level. I feel like there was probably, in the, in the sessions I did, there was probably more discussions about mental health supports and students being able to know where to go, how to get those kinds of supports, and definitely a lot about, you all have it under middle, a lot just in general of conflict resolution, being able to work with, work with students you don't just, you don't agree with, but being able to work with them. So, I, I wasn't sure that we, that, or I feel like there was more input about mental health than maybe it showed up in here, but that was just from the meetings I did. And then the other thing was no one size fits all, lot, a lot of input at the community sessions about no, you know, please stop one size fits all.
Thank you Kate. Who else? What are you, what did you notice as you've read through the synopsis? Of the community input?
I noticed that, that too, the, the college and career readiness and an emphasis to meet or exceed literacy and numeracy standards, financial literacy, those were the priorities that came out. And then that seemed very relevant to what I heard in the community meetings as well. There was, and that shows up on the surveys as well as the top three mentions. By far. So, I think that's definitely something that we, we need to frame our goals around. There may be some other issues related to the, something that I think that was interesting is the approach of looking at the whole child, but also recognizing that all of our students are in different situations and have different goals for themselves. So that it shouldn't, when we talk about college and career ready, we shouldn't measure success of a student based on whether or not they're going to college. That we should really focus on supporting students who have other ideas about what they want to do after high school. So, and when I was looking at the data that we've been getting from the staff, that's really apparent that that's an area we need improvement. We don't have as much CTE certification and internship work, you know, accomplishment for our students as others, as the average for the state. So that's an area where we could obviously improve and support that group of students more. And then with the, the values, I thought was interesting, two things that I thought stood out is, don't equate students with their test scores, don't over emphasize testing in a way that that drives your strategy and drives your adult behaviors, for instance. So, but the other thing that really was coming out is that people want stability, stop changing the curriculum so often, let's stick with something and make sure it's working. And I was interested to see in the community meetings, there was more emphasis on the structural inequities. Whereas in the surveys, that wasn't addressed in quite the same way. There were a lot of different, different interests expressed, but a lot of, and a lot of that had to do with, I think there was definitely, mental health came up, but there was also just this need to be ready with the life skills you need after high school, not just whether or not you're ready for that job, but ready to know how to find a job, ready to know how to do, take care of your banking, that sort of thing.
Yeah, thanks Kristin.
What?
How to write a letter, how to write an email, those kind of-
Yeah, communication. I thought that the, some of the metrics on communications might fold well into ELA goals, but I don't know how, how broad we can be with that. I think we'll have to get some feedback from staff about how the standards address those issues.
What, one thing is, I would, not that, not from the results that you gave, but actually the meetings I thought were super productive. I really enjoyed all of them except one part of one of them, but I really enjoyed them. But I was amazed about how that people talked about things that, a lot of things that we're already doing and they didn't know that. And why don't you replicate the things that are working well in other schools? Or a lot of concerns that we weren't putting enough funding into schools that were behind and some, some, just some things that I would, thought people would, would know, but they didn't. So it was good, it was good opportunity for us to, to-
Cindy, can I add something?
Yes, please.
So, I picked up on a lot of the things that have been mentioned already, but something additionally that I kind of just walked away from with in reflection was, the richest session that I attended was certainly the one with students. And I really wish that we had taken more time to go around to like all the high schools and hear from all the students because not only were they the richest and so just, just, you know, the best bits of information for us. But also, it, it, for some of the students, because since we only went to some, students got nominated, so we were talking to sort of the top. But what does it look to, look like to build that self advocacy muscle for all students? Because actually the students who were sort of the top and who were selected, like they know about self advocacy, like they were, they, they said very clearly like, center our voices, stop not listening to us, stop not letting us into the conversation. And they just, I, I found in like a session or two, you know, as adults, we tend to walk into spaces believing that we know it all. So I, I found people in the sessions, you know, picking issues with the questions, well, this really isn't clear, this isn't really enough to go on. Students went, went right at, like they knew exactly what needed to be true. And they're the ones experiencing it, so it'll just be great in future iterations of this to hear from more students.
Yeah, that's, that is a point that can be carried forward as you all continue and as the next iteration of the board continues with the, an ongoing community engagement and outreach processes through your implementation. Who else? Anyone else have anything to add to the conversation about what you've noticed with the community input that was gathered via survey and listening sessions? Anyone else?
Well, one thing I noticed, I know, I'm sorry Joyce and Reverend Mac, Ms. Green and Reverend Mac, both of you just jump in if I'm not seeing you asked to. But one thing I really thought was interesting on the values was that holistic, holistic concerns about the whole child and more, that included things about more extracurricular activities, more electives, more broad view of education and that. And I felt like that involved the soft skills as well because it came up so much. That was a much higher percentage of responses than anything else we got. It was almost double of this, the second highest response. So I thought that was really interesting that that is a, appears to be a significant issue for people.
Okay. Reverend Mac or?
Ms. Green.
Ms. Green, do you have anything to add before we move on?
I don't.
Then, the next thing I want to do before we actually get into the, into working on actually drafting goals with, with using this community input is just to talk about the student, student performance data that you all also received from the superintendent and his team. And first, would like to give Superintendent Kennedy, is there anything in that data that you would like to take an opportunity to highlight? Anything? Any high leverage, high need areas that you see outside of the subject areas, ELA math and career, college, military readiness?
I, I, I think I've been pretty consistent on, on the last few months on where I think the, the issues are. As, as indicated by the data that I presented to the board several times. But I don't think there's anything else I would, would highlight at this point, other, other than to say, in the presentations that I've made and when I talked about the college and career readiness, I, I, I was simply looking at data at the time versus, sort of like a, a, a personal reference to it and over the last few weeks in meeting with the president of Trinity Technical College with some principals and, and senior level members of, of the district here. I, I, I think in, in order to get to, to a point where we want to make sure on the college career, career readiness as relates to students being able to actually take on dual enrollment, being able to have apprenticeships. The focus needs to start, we have somebody working on this, needs to start not in the high school, but actually in, in the middle school, no later, no later than the eighth grade. So I'm not sure that, that came out in, in over the last few months because I didn't focus on that. But that has certainly surfaced in the last two or three weeks and some of the work that we've been doing here in the district.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions? Or clarification needed, needed regarding the data and information you've been provided? You received the, it was the same charts and, and graphs that you actually used in your community listening sessions as well as executive summary of a need, of needs assessment along with two page highlight sheet on that. Is there, are there any questions that you have or any clarification you need regarding that information?
I just have a question logistically about that information. Is that, is that going to be available at the district office? I'm in room. Just wondering if it's there.
It's on board docs and, and we got it via email. Isn't it on board doc? Board docs, okay.
We can, we can-
Can we upload those now to board docs or is?
Yeah, where was that?
It's in, so it's in our purple folder, I think.
It's the things that you provided in our purple folder that are printed out, printed out. There was concern about adding it to the agenda at the, at this late date, but now that we're talking about it, would it be okay for that to be loaded?
I was actually asking specifically if y'all have printed versions, it just to know if I need to pull mine up.
No, it's in, it's in your purple folder when you get here for that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we've, this information has been out there. It's not like it's new, right?
That is correct.
No, it's not new. I was actually just asking if we would have a, have a paper in hand just so I can reference.
Yeah, no, got it, got it Cory.
Yeah, I was speaking to a different issue for Ms. Waters, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cause confusion there. So, so yes, I think the main takeaway is that the, once the data was certified for, by the state, the numbers looked a little bit better than we expected on ELA. They didn't change, we don't have an update for college career readiness numbers because that's going to be certified in October, correct?
Well, first, first of all, I think the numbers that, that you're holding, like this is on ELA, fifty three point two percent of our kids reading a grade level. That's up from the forty nine percent, I think it was, that we had previously been presenting. But the, 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 the lower number was the twenty twenty, twenty one school year. So the, the, the latest numbers that fit, what, that you're holding, that we're looking at now, twenty twenty one, twenty two school year.
Okay.
So that's all, that's the difference, it's two different years.
It's two different years, I'm sorry. I misspoke, you're right. So, so now if we're looking at setting a goal that starts in June twenty twenty two, you know, starts from where we are in June twenty two, two, we use the fifty three percent number for ELA.
That's the baseline.
Okay. And, and what, I guess my question on this was, was this for all grades or for fifth grade?
That's for grades three through eight.
Three through eight, so all grades that take SC ready.
That's right.
Okay. I did have a question about college and career ready indicators. I know that's not, this is not on the sheet, but I wanted to ask if we have ever looked at whether students have a plan directly after graduation? Like, have we ever done anything informal or formal to find out, do they have a job lined up, are they enrolled in a, in a college, et cetera? And would that be something that we could use to assess whether or not we're getting our students on track for their next step?
So I'll, I'll check and see what postgraduate done.
Wasn't that what Chief Charleston was supposed to do? Wasn't it called Chief Charleston?
I think that was one of the metrics they wanted to look at, that's correct.
On that, it's going to be to determine whether students were college ready and had some kind of vocation or some career plan when they, when they left high school. But first now, I don't know what happened to Chief Charleston.
So, so that's something that, that we can, we can think about. And I, I guess one of the things I was wondering is whether we can make a goal that looks at that, although we don't have baseline at this point. And so it might be something to direct towards a future goal.
One of the things Kristin, that I want to, I want to jump in here really quick, as far as when we're talking about the baseline and target as, as you get into drafting goals here shortly, I don't, don't get too wrapped up in, if that's something that you're not currently measuring, that's one thing. Or, or don't have a measurement for it, but if it is, if you're going to write a goal on something that you are measuring, for example, if you, well, just for any, any goals, don't get wrapped up in the baseline and target percentages right now. As you're just drafting them right now, we would just have you say X percent to Y by Y percent. And then, then we can worry about actually filling in the blanks later.
Okay, that's-
Does that make sense?
That's good, I was going to ask that at some point.
Yep, yep. And I see Lauren-
Lauren, no, just Lauren just joined us.
Yes, that's right, Ms. Herdick is here now, so jump in if you have anything to say because I'm having a hard time keeping up with everybody's face.
Sorry to be running late.
No worries.
Lauren, as of now, we, we discussed the, just talked about what what board members noticed from the community inputs, information. And then, right now, just looking back at the data to make sure everybody is cleared on that before we continue.
Okay, and then we're going to start drafting?
Then we're going to start drafting.
Okay.
Are there any other, other questions? Yeah?
Yeah. So one of the, some of these items that kind of came up, one off that kind of didn't emerge as themes. But we know, but we know they may be significant. How do you handle that? Because I know it's supposed to be about centering on what came from the community and the data, but what if there are like some, some undercurrents that really would impact the ability for the goal to, to be realized that, that only came out as like one off comments here or there and didn't emerge as themes?
Can you, can you give a, for example?
You know, so I'm not looking at it right this second, but I, I would say, I know that in a, in one of my sessions, there was a student, well, actually in a couple of my sessions, there was like a student and there were, you know, a couple of council members that talked about the need to like teach true history in school, you know, this was, this was their term. But I'm not sure that everybody would say that across the board. It could be a one off thing, but we are in the midst of a moment where a lot is happening sort of controversially. And so like, how do you, like in the, in the, in the media, for instance, like we're having book stand and all of these other things, how do you account for what some folks identify as key, but maybe they're in the minority? In that type of example.
It, I had people say that too in one of our sessions, so that's, thank you Ms. Waters for pointing that out.
It was, it was an overwhelming response in our student meetings.
Oh yeah.
It was an overwhelming response in the student meetings?
It was. Not in, not in many of my public sessions, but in the student sessions.
And then the, the community vision survey, the, the survey, survey summary, history was mentioned, you know, twelve percent of the time. So it was definitely on people's minds, more, more information about history. That doesn't necessarily capture that concept of true history or, but I think that that, that does get to the point that academics, the interest in academics is not just about reading and math. There, there's also, science also got a similar percentage. So those academics are considered very important as well.
So, a couple of things I would say about that. First is, first is that, if y'all remember, how many goals do we advise the school system adopting?
Five or six.
Yeah, one to five.
One to five. And then, why is that?
Because you can't achieve everything.
Every goal, nothing's a goal.
If everything's important, nothing's important. If everything's a goal, nothing's a goal. So, there will always be things that are very important, but this is, this will be your job as the elected representatives to make that determination about what are the five most important things as far, that you're going to prioritize as far as goals. And then the five things that you are going to prioritize as guardrails. If, if you see something as rising enough as you all go through this process of draft, drafting, then, you know, you, while you, you would have an opportunity if it rises to the top to create a goal about one of the other subject manners outside of, outside of the three that rose to the top, if you want to. But remember, as you get more, as you adopt more, more goals, it dilutes focus and dilutes the amount of resources that can be put toward that. Thus the ability to achieve or not. The other place that you may want to represent some of those things would be in the guardrails about what should or, what should not be ignored, what, what they're, those type of, those type of examples that you gave might, might have opportunity to be covered in a guardrail. Is that responsive to your inquiry?
Somewhat, I just have to see, I, I think, I, I understand the things that you mentioned. I guess my, my big concern is, you know, whether or not it comes up as like a fifty percent thing or a thirty percent thing. If, if we kind of look at research and we know that there's like a correlation between one thing and another, but it didn't come up, just how do you account for the, the many things that actually impact children's ability to receive, receive a, a, a full and effective education that doesn't come up from community members? Because we'll be limited to what community members know or understand about what it takes to educate our child.
Right. And so that's, that is where then you're relying on the data as well. That's why you have the student performance data to couple with that. And then you also, regardless of whether or not you are, the, the superintendent will also be charged with creating an implementation plan around these goals and guardrails and will have the opportunity if, if he sees fit to, that's where some of those strategies in order, he, he'll be developing the strategies in order to actually realize those goals. So that's where you depend on your educational experts who, who are hired for exactly that reason, to ensure that achievement toward the goals is happening.
And this is, this is, yeah, this is very hard. I just wanted to echo what Cindy said. First of all, members of the board and Superintendent Kennedy, it's a, a pleasure to join you. Haven't had the opportunity to meet you all yet, talk to a few of you, but I was looking forward to it last Friday, but glad you are all well. But just wanted to, to state that when you're creating the goals, there are some things that the superintendent and the school district will still recognize as being critical elements of achieving that goal. And so even though you haven't built in the specifics around achieving that goal, things that might influence, for example, Algebra I performance for students, the, the school district will still make sure that those things are shored up. In addition to that, I just wanted to share, and this is sort of addressing your, your question, not exactly, it's a little tangential. But you, when you're also creating goals, it's not necessarily to create a goal that covers every aspect of what you could possibly address. What you recognize, and I'll use Algebra I to get as an example, you've got some data that was shared with you around Algebra I course taking percentages, those who are taking Algebra I at earlier grade levels. If, for example, you were established, you were to establish increasing that figure as a goal. What it means for the superintendent and the staff is that they do in fact have to attend to math skills pre-seventh grade or eighth grade, pre-eighth grade. So math skills going back from elementary, middle, high school at every grade level, improving student achievement in order to hit that goal. And so you don't have to set a goal for every grade level, but by setting that goal at say an Algebra I level, it creates kind of a domino effect of what needs to happen prior to. it creates kind of a domino effect of what needs to happen prior to. And so the same applies to the issue that you just raised. If you set a goal around accomplishing a particular, um, aspect of a student outcome, there are other things that will go into that, that the district will have to attend to.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Hart.
Then Cindy, um, I'm wondering if we could put the summary up as a shared screen?
Yeah, I, I think she's working on it.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the community input summary or?
Yep, yep. Just cuz I think there was a resounding themes throughout the district in all sessions. And so if we can start kind of honing in on those.
Did you wanna look at the priorities that were listed?
Yep, yep.
Okay. On the community engagement document?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now that's the survey summary, so.
Yeah, this is perfect.
Okay, that's good. Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to be clear.
Let me know where you want me to scroll to.
I think just going down at the bottoms and looking at the percentages, um.
Yeah, like right there.
Perfect. Are we ready at this point to start kind of honing in?
Well, we, we talked about these before you got on a little bit. Where we saw career, ELA, math were obviously above a good bit than the other areas. But there's other areas that actually are similar to those too, like academics. And, um, I think that down below or maybe a little bit lower, some things about history and science.
Right.
Feed into that as well. Um, it's academic related, and of course, ELA is going to help people get there. But I, yeah, I'm wondering if we can, we've, it's about one thirty-seven. I think we could probably move into a couple of ideas for, uh, for goals. And I had something up from Mr. Kennedy's, one of his proposed goals in August, just to give some background on the, the format. But I've marched it up a little bit, so it's kinda ugly. And I just wanted to give, you know, this, the idea of the SMART goal being, you know, we're gonna increase percentage of all fifth grade students on grade level from a baseline percent in June of twenty twenty-two to a goal, uh, the goal that was mentioned was seventy-five percent in June of twenty twenty-seven. So we're gonna have a real specific time points, time-bound goals, and we're gonna try to have, um, some population of students. It doesn't necessarily have to be fifth grade. We can talk about that. Um, so does any, and what I was hoping to do is I have a chart up here so that if you guys are giving out some information.
Actually, Kristin.
Let me know.
Kristin, we kinda have a, a plan here, um, to, to do this. I'm gonna stop sharing this screen for a moment.
I didn't realize that you were gonna run the meeting.
That's okay. Um, just, yeah, I think, totally fine, cuz we need you running the meeting on the ground while we're not in, in-house. So very much appreciate it and love that you have the, um, sample goal up there so that everyone remembers the components of a goal, um, which you just explained around having that specific pop, for it being specific measurable, achievable, results-oriented and time-bound. So it would need that specific population of students, um, to be impacted. The measure, which is the tool that they would, that the goal is using the instrument or what have you, um, for measuring, whether that be a, a certain, um, Ted, like the SC Ready or the end of course exams or what have you. Um, the baseline, which we're going to say, just keep that at X right now, X percent or X number, whatever it is. Uh, the target percent also to Y percent or, um, number, whatever the me, that measure is. And, um, then the, the subject area, so those would be, um, would be that. I wanna just, uh, remembering that your goals are about student outcomes, which are a measure of student results, and it's about what students know or are able to do. And there's those things that it needs, which we just went over. And a couple of examples, which those of you in the room there have what Kristin put together for you. Um, and I think that covers that. Um, what we were thinking, uh, we could do a, around, um, getting this going is having you each write up to five goals for yourself. Um, so individually write five goals using the student data and community input that you have. Um, remember those SMART components? If you, if there's not five that you think are important to you, don't write five. You don't have to have five. One, just no fewer than one, no more than five. Um, and then, but go ahead and prioritize them with that first being your top priority, what you think is most important, and then list in descending order of prioritization. So I do think I have, um, that on the screen again. So we'll give you maybe about ten minutes, and if you don't get all of the, if, if you even get to the grade level, the topic area and the measure, um, that would work fine as well. Are there any questions before we start this?
I'm wondering if you could just go back to the examples? Thank you.
Did anybody in the boardroom have any questions?
So, no, no, we don't have any questions.
Okay.
Leave the examples up though.
I will, and, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, like this one, like right there, like forty-eight percent. Next step, whether it's career knowledge, which material this would be, could be career knowledge or college, there was.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, we're doing it. Yeah, we are, we are. So. We can prioritize them, but we, but that one.
I don't know if the, the, what it terminology, but it was almost like they were saying the students was like, that they would be ready to face the world.
Yes, yes.
Those kinds of skills. Um, but those skills.
Yeah.
Would include communication, financial literacy, um.
They do keep using it from just like ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. Be ready for that.
Ready, ready.
Kept remembering.
This is the one that, I think. This is the one about, do you have a child? I, I just wanna know.
Yeah. Well, could, could, would it be better than to say not, who have a plan? I think maybe making, making sure we had, does it say who have a plan? Maybe, maybe saying that they have a plan. Because I think helping them to get the plan is part of, right, right now, we're, we're doing some things. But I don't know that if you looked at all of our graduates. I think the way she wrote it, she put that.
Who have a plan?
Will increase. The number of CCSD graduates who have a plan will increase from X to X. I think. Yeah, but what if they don't have a plan?
Then they're not, for, that's part of the proof that we need to increase.
To have a place. Okay, alright. Got it, okay. I almost wondered if like, if that one is one that's like, should just be a hundred percent of the game. Because, I mean, I know it can't, but like, that could get to a hundred percent fairly quickly.
Oh, yeah.
It's really just a matter of guiding and teachers who are catching them and developing them. It's not even like a.
Well, I think it does depend. I, I don't think that we're near.
Oh.
Oh, no, no.
So somebody gonna dictate.
There's one about the being ready.
Yeah, I mean. So one hundred percent of graduated students, one hundred percent of graduated students will be able, like, ready to.
Do they have to do an interview? They're on track to, to finish their.
Now, this is, this is, this is that they are able to, uh, they, they understand, but it's that wouldn't know how to go out there and apply for a call.
Oh, that one.
Yeah. Okay, everybody, I'm gonna interrupt for a second. Once we're done with this, we're gonna have each of you report out on what your five goals, your five individual goals are. So, um, as you're, just so you know what's coming next, so in about.
I told them that their persistence is bad, yeah.
So, I mean, we know, we, we know we're gonna have goal, college career ready, next step ready goals. We all agree on that. We know we're gonna have.
So we need to write the name.
So, so what, we have a process. And if, if you all report out, um, then we'll have a report out from each of you. After that point, we'll take a break so that we can review the commonalities and then come back to you with some, um, recommendations. Or, uh, with that as a jumping off point for the discussion of honing in on what the language actually will be. Um, and what the measures actually will be and, and how to consolidate. So rather than each of you trying to agree right now on what, uh, uh, in that, in that room agreeing on what, um, the final is gonna be, we're gonna get all of your thinking in one space, um, so that, that we can move from there.
Okay, Cindy, we're, we are gonna do our independent work and, and resume process.
Gonna give you a two-minute warning. And Superintendent Kennedy, I know you already had some goals written, but you get to participate as well as we report those out. Is he here?
Yep.
Yep, I see him. Yep, I see him.
Thank you.
No, I know. Need to do that. I know.
You know, why can't we just talk people and come up with our own?
Exactly.
Like a child or something.
Alright. Stop sharing my screen. And we are going to have you, um, each. One by one, report out your, um, goals in order of. Of priority for you, so, um. Lauren, can we start with you? And we're gonna be typing as you, um, read, so just goal one first.
I personally found this a little difficult without talking it out. Um, I mean, I found, felt like the consensus and most of the meetings were kind of around those foundational aspects of ELA and math. And then looking beyond into more of that college and career readiness. Um, but I do think is, think we have to focus on a subgroup of students.
Okay.
And I don't know if that was actually apparent from all of our community sessions. And so I'm not really sure how to kind of dive in, um. To identify the goals. I mean, I think from a priority standpoint, it is making sure those foundational pieces are there from an ELA and a math perspective. And then honing in on that college and career readiness that might, um, encompass the financial literacy piece that we heard so much. Um, different career opportunities, but I'm really not sure how to get to this. And I'm not sure if everyone in the boardroom is feeling the same way. Like, I think based on the community's summaries, that we can identify those top priorities being. What I just listed out. But I'm not really sure where to go from here without having some conversation.
More conversation, okay. So you're, um, so ELA in general with a, some population.
I mean, for me, I'm, I'm kind of where the community is. I think that we have to focus early elementary, um, pre-K head start on those foundational pieces of ELA and math. And then we really throughout have to focus on that college and career readiness.
Okay.
And I think that encompasses life skills and S E L. So, like honing down on a specific thing is, I'm finding to be difficult right now.
Okay. Let's, um, let's continue to have each of you report out and see where we're at after that. Um, one of the things I will, to speak to your idea around, um, pulling out a, a certain, a specific population. Um, what I would say is that, uh, when the community and, and anyone else can chime in here. But the, the community has, um, has said that those, those three topics. The, the early, early ELA, the, um, early math, uh, and the college career ready. Are important, important aspects. And as you mentioned, college and career ready encompassing that financial literacy and all, all of those things that you mentioned. Um, as far as whether or not the community is going to tell you that a certain group, uh, would, needs to be. Part of that specific population, um, when you get into the specificity of a goal. That, that is where the data is very helpful. So, um, if you are seeing, a- and, and, and this is where, um. Superintendent Kennedy's, uh, collaboration on this as well will be helpful. If there is a lower performing student group that is, that is a high need area. Um, where if resources were targeted there, that it would leverage achievement, um. In the organization and really move the needle for kids, then that, that is where the, looking at that data. And really coupling it together will come, because that's what you know. That's what, um, and that's what the, the superintendent, uh, contributes as well.
I guess we just heard loud and clear from the community from based on the percentages, kind of what those three main pillars would be.
Right.
Now, if we go into five goals from there, fine, between the one and five. But is it possible for us, and the whole group may not feel like this, for us to kind of go through based on those percentages and rating? And kind of talk through what these goals could be based on the student data? And somebody please chime in from the boardroom, because I might be completely just off. I think we all, I think we're on board with that.
So, is, is anybody, did anybody have more than those three goal areas?
Yes, Courtney a lot.
Okay, so you said that's where, yeah, so wanna, um, hear what everybody, so if we can just go through, let's just go through. One by one, let's get your goal areas. Who will go next?
Courtney, you go first, because then we'll see, your cards are probably gonna fall.
Okay. So I had those three areas, uh, but I had one additional. They were still five goals only because I broke out math and ELA separately, so I'll just read them, um.
Yeah, just, uh, Courtney, just give us one, give, give us what you think is the most important one. And then we'll build, yeah, then we'll build around that.
Oh, Lord, see, now, this is my least favorite question in the session, so let me see. I, I think, given the focus.
Doesn't have to be your most important, it doesn't have to be your most important, just give us one, yeah.
Okay, so I said the number of students enrolled in or participating in apprenticeships slash internships slash job shadowing. By ninth grade will increase from blank to blank by twenty twenty seven.
The ninth grade apprenticeships.
Well, and I'm sorry, I put apprenticeships before I decided that they needed to do something by ninth grade. So just maybe like a job shadow or like an exposure, um. I had, a- after we did the assignment wrong, I had little time to write it down, so we can chop it up as we need. But the main goal was that, um, in listening to what was shared earlier, I don't remember by whom. It was said that, um, I think Mr. Kennedy just had mentioned like starting that kind of career exposure early. And since students have to opt into like the CASs by high school, they needed to have been exposed to some things. So, group, feel free to chop it up, but the overall purpose is that early in career, by middle school, they would have had some sort of. Field trips, job exposure, something.
Okay, perfect, uh, no need to chop it up. Um, two, two questions for you. The first of which is, did anyone have something similar to that? Did anyone have something similar to a goal around, um, apprenticeships or career exposure as one of their goals?
So, uh, this is Dawn. Uh, I, um, I have a, a goal around college and career readiness. And, and embedded in that, in my thinking at least, is the notion of how do we get kids ready through their apprenticeship programs? So that would, for me, would be a potential, um, uh, interim goal for the, for, for myself. Which we'll.
Okay. And then one other question, my second question, uh, if no one else has something similar. My second question is, do you currently measure, uh, anything like that apprenticeships or job shadowing? Do you currently have a measure, uh, in your data systems for what that, uh, for that measure? Or is that something we need to create?
We do have that.
Okay.
I, so can I, I, I have, I didn't write it all the way out, because I need somebody else, but like, I think one of our three, at least one of our three goals. Should be a college career next step ready. And I kind of, I was thinking about apprenticeships and better utilizations of our Center for Advanced Studies. As, what do we call it, goals underneath those or interim goals, like interim goals? So I could see those being interim goals to make, to get our kids to be.
It might more be strategy, it might be a strategy.
Could be, okay, could be. I know, I mean, we're not.
Just, you know, the su- the superintendent owns the interim goals and the strategy. Yeah.
Yeah, well, so that's my suggestions.
So, the superintendent would say how we get to that goal, um, so that would, that'll be his job. Um, anyone else have something similar to that? Alright, without putting Courtney on the spot, I'll see if anyone else, does anyone else have one goal that they like to read? That they thought was important, if not, Courtney, we'll go back to you.
Sure, I would like to, I'm gonna read a goal, and it's similar to Lauren's, but I, I have. I wanted to add something, students making at least a C in Algebra One will increase from X percent in twenty twenty two. To Y percent of all student, and this was of all students, not just students taking algebra. Okay, of all students in twenty twenty seven. And the, at least some, Z percentage of improvement will occur in demographic groups. Which are below fifty percent meet or exceed. I didn't know if that was loud, I sort of qualified it.
Could you repeat that, Dr. French?
Sure, so. Students making at least a C in Algebra One will increase from X percent of all students in twenty twenty two. To Y percent of all students in twenty twenty seven. And at least Z percent of improvement will occur in demographic groups, which are below fifty percent meet or exceed currently.
Uh, so, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that it's all students who are below fifty percent meets or exceeds on. The prior year assessment or?
Yeah, it would be, I guess, twenty twenty seven, for instance.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Uh, so, okay, but essentially what you've got is you've got an Algebra One, um, goal, uh, around grades. So students making at least a C in Algebra One, uh, you've got from X to Y, um, by twenty twenty seven. Did anyone have a similar goal? Did anyone have something similar to an Algebra goal? Yes, go ahead.
Um, I had an Algebra goal, but it was specific to a population. Um, I said percentage of black students, um, and I put a, I put enrolled and put a box and put passing, question mark. So, trying to figure out which language is most helpful. But it either enrolled in or passing Algebra One will increase from X percent to Y percent by July twenty twenty seven. And just to name where the question is, um, I don't want it to be like percentage of black students passing. It results in no additional black students enrolling in Algebra. But I'm also concerned that an enrollment goal doesn't speak to the achievement level they need to be having, and so.
But enrollment's not the outcome that you're looking for. So you're, the outcome is the, that they learned the material.
The problem though is, I want to speak to enrollment levels also, because enrollment levels is.
Part of the problem.
Uh, a part of the problem, because it's, it's.
That's why I said it needed to be percentage of all students. All, all students, not all students taking Algebra, all students. So, i- if you said it, student, black students making at least a C or something like that. Uh, or passing Algebra One.
Yeah, so we don't have to merge, we don't have to merge the goals just yet. Uh, we don't have to merge the goals just yet. What we wanna do first is get, what are all the ideas that you have around an Algebra One goal? If you had it, let's get all those ideas on the table first. And then we'll work on the language of kind of merging and, and blending into a, into an ultimate goal. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I just also wanna name that, um, in, as we work with the language, it just needs to speak to more students, more black students. Enrolling in Algebra One, as well as doing well in Algebra One.
Sounds good, so just to let you know, um, performance and percentage of kids enrolled in are two separate things. And they could be uniquely defined, they could be jointly defined, jointly defined might be a little difficult, but they are two unique things. So I hear you, making sure we get down both, one, there's an achievement expectation. And then two, there's a, an, an enrollment or percentage expectation in those courses as well. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, anyone else have an Algebra goal?
I had the same. But I, I classified under, underserved students, it was very similar to Courtney's.
Okay, so underserved students, um, in, did you have enrollment, did you have achievement? How was your, how was yours worded?
I kind of had the, the same around her increasing, um, enrollment initially. And then looking at performance.
Anyone else?
Yeah, uh, this Dawn, so, um, I, I, I agree with the, both the enrollment and, as a, as a, as an approach. Increase in that as well as the, uh, performance, but also I was very specific, uh, and when that would occur. And that would be eighth grade, students in eighth grade successfully completing Algebra One.
So you targeted eighth grade, um, as, uh, as the goal.
That, that is correct, let's say a student takes, uh, Algebra One for the first time in eleventh grade. Uh, I'm, you know, I'm assuming that's a bit, bit late for his, for his or her high school career.
It is, as you think about, some students are not going to take, not gonna go to college, for instance. So as long as they have basic algebra skills so that they can explore options, I'm okay if they take it in eleventh grade. As long as they're, as long as it's part of their overall graduation.
What they can do.
So, and so if I'm, uh, so I say I'm a seventh grade student going to the eighth grade, I may not. Realize the importance of the, uh, of having taken Algebra in terms of my, my, um, college preparation. And by the time I do that, maybe by the time I come to that realization, in eleventh grade, it might be too late.
Well, that's true, but, but I think that what we, something that we heard from community members was that it's not all about kids who are going to college. That's not the goal for all the kids.
Right, but even if they're, even if they're gonna work, if we say, if, if we don't, they, give them an opportunity to do that in eighth grade, that limits so much.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't.
Let's time out here for a second, guys. Let's not debate each other's goals right now, we're just trying to get everybody's thinking on the table.
Can I add something?
Right.
Um, too, so going back to, um, this Algebra goal, I should also mention, I, I erase this. Because I thought y'all would say, no, you have too many, but I, the, in my mind, the goal was actually for black Latinx and special education students. Because they all are always lagging behind. I don't know how you work that in, if you can do that many. So I, I like scribbled it out on my paper, because I was like, they're gonna tell me there's too many, too many demographics. But I do wanna lift up that it's, we have several demographics, about five or six always lagging behind. And those are some, so people who are learning English for the first time, people with, you know, students with disabilities, uh, black Latinx, and then students in poverty as well.
So again, uh, this is just getting the ideas on the table. Um, and then we'll go through and work through what the specifics look like, what grade levels, what, um, so what specific student groups you, you're targeting. Um, because, uh, you, you, one person used the term underserved school students. You could define underserved students as black Latinx, special ed, if you like, but that's, uh, we can debate that.
Okay.
Um, so any others, any others have something on Algebra One, just on Algebra One? Alright, someone other than Courtney, so perfect, I got us on the Algebra One. Someone other than Courtney, or, uh, I think Kristen just shared that one. So, uh, anyone other than Kristen or Courtney, do you have one goal that you'd like to, to share with the group?
I'll, I'll do, I, and I'm sure this, this isn't what it's supposed to be. But, um, percentage of fifth grade students reading on grade level will increase from X to a hundred percent by twenty twenty seven.
So fifth grade students reading on grade level. Anyone else have something similar to students reading on grade level?
I had this one as well, but again, specific sub, um, subgroups of just classifying underserved students, and again, we can define that, um, as you mentioned earlier.
I had.
So you, go ahead.
I had a similar one, I, I mentioned reading comprehension and writing standards as opposed to just ELA. Um, would increase from uh, yeah, would do the increases, and also I wanted to somehow address groups that are not performing in the levels we need, and it could be black and brown students or um, and might include special ed too.
Okay, anyone else?
So, and I did have a um, reading goal also, and I, I, similar to everyone else, fifth grade students um moving from fifty-four point two percent, fifty-four point two percent in May twenty twenty-two to uh some, uh, some, like some percentage in May twenty, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so you just added, you had the same goal, but just added some specifics, and Cindy shared, we can, we can address the specific targets for specific grade level shortly.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
You guys have taught us that you have to hone in on these one to five goals within subgroups, if you're saying all students, doesn't that kind of exceed what we're able to accomplish if we're focusing on a subgroup of students? Then that builds the entire system up?
I'm not sure what you mean by, uh, I'll, I'll try to answer that, um.
I guess if we are focused on all students and all goals.
If, well, if you're focused on, let's say all students, yeah, that's the whole point, if you're focused on all students. Um, now you can do all fifth graders, uh, and then all fifth graders means all fifth graders will increase now. You can increase some subgroups of fifth graders and not others, um, as a part of that, if you're saying all fifth graders. If you say all students across all grade levels, you're basically saying, go fix the whole system and come back and and tell us how you did, uh, and that's what we're gonna caution you against doing.
Okay.
But you could say all fifth graders without targeting a specific student group, but what that might mean is that special needs students might not progress.
Right.
You could hit the goal without necessarily all subgroups hitting that goal.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
So I had a similar goal, so I won't restate what's already been shared, but I did put a piece in there around um, like diversity in kind of texts because of the concern that came from the community around not wanting to be so beholden to tests, so if we're talking about reading on grade level by fifth grade, like we get into this situation potentially of only reading passages and excerpts that are um directly correlated to the test, and so it would be nice if there could also be something in the goal about the, the quality of reading that students are doing. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Uh, by quality meeting, you mean quality of reading that students are doing in the classroom?
Yes, so uh, quality of reading, like, are students actually reading books and getting in groups and discussing and learning all that there is, or are they just learning like the competencies that are assessed on, on the test, and I'm, I'm going back to like when I taught school, and like, we pretty much gave you know, reading passages structured to help students pull out competencies they needed to pass this like skill the test was testing for, but it wasn't actually like deep reading, uh, developing uh an acumen and a skill set for like reading to inform thinking and and all that, and that just may be too much for, for, you know, for writing a goal, but I do think it gets lost, and it did come up from the community as a concern. Um, so if, if we could speak to that, great.
Do you have a measure for that?
Uh, I doubt it, but I mean, I don't know, Mr. Kennedy, do we have like a, a quality re- of reading measurement?
So, n- not in terms of state tests, but I would uh say that uh, to your point with the E- E- EL curriculum, um, that, I'd like Michelle to weigh in if necessary, I think with the EL curriculum, it's more focused on the on, on your concerns than what our curriculum would has been in the past.
Hi, Ms. Simmons.
Hello, I would agree, um, I went to the West Ashley Community Engagement with Ms. Heteric and Ms. Darby, and that rolls to the surface as well, we want students to be thinkers, to be critical thinkers, and that's the shift we're making with the new curriculum. And so embedded in our SC Ready scores, you'll find comprehension, uh, writing, uh, uh, the gamut of reading skills. But that's the end we're trying to arrive at with EL.
Thank you. I was just wondering.
Thank you.
Since quality of reading is more of an input into the system, would it be something that might be addressed in a guardrail that don't, um, don't use text? That don't meet those qualifications, I guess, since I'm, I'm having a hard time getting the phrasing right right now.
Uh, I think the answer to that is um, is yes, it could be a guardrail, I think the other thing is um, again, separating how you accomplish your reading goal, um, because again, the strategy for accomplishing the reading goal becomes the superintendent and the administration's work, uh, but your real objective is to establish the goal, so, um, how they get there will be defined as part of the strategy, they'll work with the board, but it's how they, so how they'll describe, uh, define the strategy. But right now, I've got three things, um, I've got a goal around uh, ninth grade apprenticeships slash job shadowing, um, slash job exposure, uh, however we define that. From X to Y by a certain point, um, I've got an Algebra One goal. Uh, and we'll define it later, but it could be around grades, it could be around performance, or it could be around enrollment, uh, but an Algebra One goal, and then I've got a fifth grade uh, reading achievement goal, um, and again, how we, the specifics that we add to it will be added later, but I've got um, apprenticeships, Algebra One, fifth grade reading, does anyone have another goal that they'd like to, to share?
Um, I thought Lauren may have talked about this, and my goal is not smart, let me just tell you right now, it is. But, um.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not smart, but it's brilliant.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, so past is smart, but um, it's, it's the goal around graduating students being able or ready to tackle life challenges, real world skills, we heard that a lot from the students, like financial literacy, um, communication skills, critical thinking skills, so I, I would think maybe and this might be tied in to the career exposure, but that's ninth grade, and I'm looking at seniors. I'm thinking seniors that graduate should be, we should make sure they have these skills when they graduate so that they are ready to go out and do what they need to do.
Uh, do you have a measure for that?
Well, like I said, it wasn't all smart, so no, not yet, but you know, I figured we could.
Doesn't have to, doesn't have to be smart, do you have, so you, you mentioned several different things, uh, but is there a measure um, in the district currently, and it doesn't, you don't have to have it, it could be something that you'll have to develop, but um, is there a measure in the district for the skills that seniors graduate with?
What about, what's the, th- there's the profile of the South Carolina graduate, and then there's the WIN. There's another, I don't think that talks about those kind of, I don't know that those are soft skills, but there's a couple of measures that we do for graduates.
Though, uh, with the college, uh, career readiness indicators, which are state indicators, which we do track and state track, I mean, uh, in addition to the academic stuff like ACT, SAT, uh, there are the dual credit, um, courses. There's the Career and Technology, uh, certification, so that's those, that's the certification for different areas, state approved, work-based learning experience in, uh, uh, internships, so that's tracked. Um, the uh, what you referred to, work keys, I thought we presented that at the, at the uh, the board meeting recently. And then, of course, there's the uh, the um, services vocational, now, we don't, I don't think have anything with um so like the, the personal finance, um, not say that we couldn't develop that, go ahead, Michelle.
That we feel like, uh, teachers who are already teaching economics, business courses could offer our students around financial literacy.
So I don't know if I have, have an answer about how do we measure it, but.
Okay, no problem.
You gonna help us with that?
Yep, no problem, um, and that's, that, that's perfect, the reason I, the only reason I ask, is there a measure for it? Um, is to just to get, get you in the routine of kind of understanding, okay, we can set goals, there are some goals, we've had districts, uh, we had a district recently that set a goal that they didn't have a measure for, um, and then, but the district had to go back and figure out how we're gonna measure this. Um, how will we, what would it look like, et cetera, so that, that's perfectly fine, but I want you to think about how do we measure what students know or are able to do based on the goal we've set, does that make sense?
Yes.
Uh, did anyone else have a goal um related to graduation? So we've got uh graduation, this one's more what students are able to do when they graduate, but did anyone have anything similar related to graduations? Graduation, uh, I think I see, it's hard to see because you're a long way away, but I think I see two hands up.
So, similar, not exactly the same, but, but very similar, mine was the number of students with a family-generated school career plan will be X by twenty twenty-two, I don't think that that exists, ish, it sort of does.
Not family-generated, I mean, we think. Something else, and the, the reason that I um, think it's similar is because that I would think that the plan would be all around a family determining what a student's path is gonna be, which would have to include the end that they're trying to achieve.
Uh, this is for, I didn't hear everything, because you broke up a little bit, but um, is this for seniors?
So actually, it's not for seniors, it's really a, in my mind, a plan that a student, a family would need to be like settling on around fifth grade and deciding like what does middle school and high school look like, so that they know where they're going to arrive by senior year and where they're going to go after. So very similar to like the Achieve Charleston piece that Joyce brought up earlier.
Yes, Joyce.
The brilliant goal writer there.
Okay, so.
So, so question for you before we move away from that goal, um, is that family-generated school career plan? Is that something that students know or are able to do?
Yeah, I think they.
Is that something that students, is that something that students, is that a measure of what students know or are able to do?
I don't know if it's a measure of what they're able, well, yeah, I actually do, I think it's a measure of whether they know why they're in school and where they're going, and also that they're able to navigate the school system effectively, which a lot of people really don't, like that came up in our, our community engagement sessions, where parents were like, there's one group in particular that kept mentioning it, they kind of came to several sessions, but they represent a large group, and they were like, you know, students are not meeting with guidance counselors to actually get informed about the process of what they should be doing in school and how to get from point A to point B. Um, and so I don't think that it's, it neatly fits in, fits into that box, but I think that one, it is, it is a concern and knowing in aggregate how to navigate the school system, uh, impacts the ability to do all of the rest.
Okay.
That is a similar one, but it was more focused on the CCSD graduate. And mine was um, CCSD graduates who have a specific plan such as a job, college, continuing ed, apprenticeship will increase from X percent in twenty twenty-two to Y percent twenty twenty-seven.
And who was that, who was that for, I, I apologize, sometimes you're cutting out, um, on, on my end, but the very beginning was for whom?
CCSD graduates, high school graduates, CCSD is the school district.
Yep. Uh, so CCSD graduates will have an apprenticeship by the time they graduate?
They would have a specific plan, which could be, for example, a job, an apprenticeship, college or continuing ed, like they are enrolled at college, or they have an apprenticeship, or they have a job lined up.
This is post-graduation.
Right about the time they graduate.
Okay, so this is post-graduation.
Right.
Got it. Anyone else?
On, um, anyone else on the graduate, you mean? So I have one, the percent of high school, uh, graduates that are college and career-ready will increase from sixty-seven point seven percent in May twenty twenty-one to eighty-six point two percent in May twenty twenty-seven.
As measured by what?
Uh, it's measured by the College and Career Readiness indicators that are, um, published by the state of South Carolina, so we have measures for that. And so for instance, well, I don't know, for instance, I just gave you the list, uh, the ACT composite score, the SAT composite score, Advanced Placement Score, three or higher, dual credit hours, uh, Career and Technology Education with Certification, State Approved Work-Based Learning Experience, uh, College, College Readiness Assessment on the um, work keys, then the uh, ASVAB for the, for the armed services.
And the way I saw it, when I went through your data, um, each of those were unique measures. Uh, so you're not targeting any unique measure on those, you're just saying overall, across all of those measures, sixty-seven, well, more, a higher percentage of our kids will be, um, college and career-ready.
Well, well, it works here in, in South Carolina, in order to be dean, uh, College and Career Readiness, uh, a student has to meet on, at least one of those uh indicators, not, not all of them, at least one.
Got it.
Can I ask, may I ask Dawn a question, but yours, your goal is specific to career-ready, uh, college-ready, right, not, not anything, I'm just sitting talking about who go to, who aren't going to college, this is specific to college kids.
So it's, it's both, college and career, college and career. So for instance, again, it, one, one of those indicators is the uh, Career and Technology Certification Certification.
Dawn, is what I have on the screen accurate?
It is.
And that's what, that's what we reviewed, so that's why I want to make sure you weren't targeting one of those, you're targeting the collective of those, is, is kind of the question I was asking.
Now, I think one is missing, which is the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, ASVAB.
All right, anyone else have something related to graduation?
Dawn, is within those um, various kind of tests and certifications, do we know the percentage of students who are actually taking one of those?
So I, I'm sure we have that, we, yes, we do have the percentage that has taken those, yes.
So we could look at enrollment as being a part of this as well to increase the college and career readiness.
That's correct, so for instance, going back to the idea of having uh more students in uh, in um uh, internships, uh, uh, apprenticeships, so we have a team that's working on, but working with eighth grade students this year to plan out their college, their, their, the high school gr- uh, careers that, that will allow them to do that, so, so that would not, for us, that, our way of thinking right now, the, the number of kids in eighth grade, as, as an example, uh, that are participating would not be the goal, uh, that would be an input for the goal of the College and Career Readiness.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have something related to graduation? And if not, does anyone else have another goal that they would like to share?
I have one that's totally not smart at all and not brilliant, I, and I'm, I wasn't sure how to do it, because I don't know how people would measure it, but something about the percentage of students accessing SCL resources
would measure it, but something about the percentage of students accessing SEL resources or wellness competencies will increase by blank to blank by blank. So it's really, I'm trying to get at, I've heard a lot from people, including even the students, that need for those kind of mental health supports and with, and knowing how to, how to access those too while they're in school, knowing how to say, I need some help and here's the resources and did, we did have one person, Michelle was at that session, a woman who said not to do any SEL, but she had just moved here from Oregon and didn't have her kids in our system. And we talked to her afterwards and, and everybody else, every session, people talked about that.
Um, so the percentage of students accessing SEL resources, is that something that students will know or be able to do? Is that a measure of?
Yeah, so maybe, maybe the accessing, it could be.
Or could it possibly be a guardrail?
Could be a guardrail. That's true. I've got a good little guardrail list going too, so.
Okay. Uh, so we've noted it. I've noted it. Uh, I don't know if, I, I think the team has noted it as well. Uh, so we've noted it, but we'll come back to it. Uh, anyone have something similar in terms of a goal around SEL, around, uh, social, emotional learning, student wellness?
Yes, but, but now you've got me thinking. I just made up, I did make up some stuff, but I, but I was like, it might be doable. So mine said, um, students will be able to demonstrate a, an SEL, uh, SEL score of blank by 2027. So there had been a lot of conversation. A lot of students do online SEL programming. I don't know if there's actually a test or anything. Um, so I definitely made that up. But I was like, what if there was an indication of like social and emotional health that we could track? I'm not sure if that exists or not.
All right.
You can't, you can't ask me because I'll make all the things up and be like, we could just create it.
Yes, we could, we could do everything and we can measure everything. All right. Anyone else have another goal? So if that's the only SEL, anyone else have another goal? That they'd like to share? Another goal that they wrote down? Do you want me to recap for you again?
I wrote down a goal that I don't know how to measure yet. Conflict resolution skills will increase from some percentage of students to all percentage, you know, to another percentage.
Yeah, I would, I, I think that could, I, that's conflict resolution is one of the things that I think about in, in the SEL wellness piece, but that came up a bunch too. It also could be a part of this. Yeah, life skills. Yeah, yeah.
I, I agree with that too, the life skills, but I didn't really know how to accomplish, um, in it with a measurement.
When the other thing that you were saying, Ray, about, um, and this was after we had written down our goals. You were saying that we could look at, um, re-recognizing that even though this skill isn't specific to ELA, that, you know, communication skills are going to come out of that. And that would have to be something that students are, are doing, are learning throughout high school in order to be able to be good at conflict resolution. But we also have other inputs that we are already trying to use that might help with that too. But I do think the challenge there is figuring out how to measure that. And without adding yet another standardized test.
So, so, so one, one point that, that may be helpful, may, because we aren't there yet. But there's a, there's a, um, pretty aggressive team in terms of their timeline that's actually working. And the timeline is for January, or this, coming January, to, to define by grade, for each grade, what each, what a student needs to know and be able to do when they leave that grade, which includes more than academics, some of the things that you guys are talking about around the conflict resolution. Uh, I'm not, some of the SEL, but that works on the way. And it may, may, uh, may not be appropriate for, for, for the goals here, but it would influence some of the, uh, uh, the outcomes of kids, I believe. Uh, and, and give families a way to see what it is that their, their students need to, need to be able to do. And, oh.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, anyone else? Anyone else have any other goals to share? Now we'll just open up the floor.
Hello, hi.
Dr. Frazier just came in.
I knew you all missed me. How are you doing? Um, I, I think that we should also add as a goal, that we involve ninety percent of our parents by whatever date or whatever. I don't, and I don't know how we should say that, but something to the effect of parental involvement. And that's an important issue that we've been dealing with, within the system for years.
So, uh, again, I'll go back, uh, we'll, we'll note it. Um, I'll go back. There's a, we've got goal rail, uh, guardrails, excuse me, that are set up to really measure the community's values. And if parental involvement is a value, um, then that value really goes around guardrails. For the goals, we're going to stick to those things that students know or are able to do. So recognizing that their parents, the parental involvement is a critical part of that. Uh, we're going to separate from the goals, what the students are able to do from the other things that we want to try to accomplish as a community. Does that make sense? So we've noted that parental involvement, um, and we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back up. Um, but we've noted parental involvement is a critical, critical issue.
Well, that's what happens when you come into a meeting at the last minute.
No, ma'am. You're perfectly fine. Uh, any other, any other suggestions about what students know or are able to do? And I think what we do, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy, um, uh, because I, I, she and I are kind of piggybacking. And I, I jumped on her, on her piggyback. So I appreciate you letting me jump in. But, um, so the ones that I've got again are apprenticeships, um, slash job shadowing, career exposure, um, particularly for ninth graders, Algebra I, uh, a goal around Algebra I. Uh, we will decide whether it's specific to demographic groups, underserved students, um, what grade level, if there's a particular grade level, uh, and then, uh, again, I said underserved students. Uh, fifth grade reading, uh, goal around, and again, we'll talk about the details, but a fifth grade reading goal, um, a graduation goal for, uh, students, um, particularly related to their skill, their real-world skill sets, uh, speaking, word keys. Uh, and it's, I'm going to, if you don't mind, um, Superintendent Kennedy, I'm going to kind of join one of the goals that you shared, uh, but that is, uh, around career readiness indicators. Um, is it okay to take the career readiness indicators and kind of merge it with that goal around real-world skill sets? Or do you all want to keep those separate? Does that question make sense? Because when we talked about the skill sets for the real world, we talked about CTE certification, ACT, SAT, word keys, ASVAB, financial literacy, those are the things that you listed under that one. But then later we came back to a college and career-ready indicators goal. And is it okay to merge those two or do you want to keep those separate?
I think it's a good idea to merge them.
Okay. Um, then we've got, um, students, I'm going to translate this a little bit, uh, because it started off as a family-generated school career plan. Um, but the family-generated school career plan is really what the family can do, uh, or what the family has suggested. But what you shared was students knowing how to navigate the school system. Um, so I'll translate a little bit so that we're really focused more on what students are able to do. Um, but I heard that one, uh, and then related to that, that graduates have a plan post-graduation. Um, and that, again, we can, some of these things, we'll, we'll recommend moving to guardrails rather than goals, but we'll talk about that. Um, and then the last one that was shared was students accessing, um, SEL resources. Again, we'll take that and play with it a little bit, but it may end up being a guardrail rather than a goal. Uh, not the last one, second to the last one, and the last one, parental involvement. Anything else? All right. Cindy, you want to talk about?
Can I ask a question?
I missed some.
In the work that you all had done on this, so one of the things that has bothered me the entire time I've been on the school board is, obviously, we have to designate groups of students, like because of the state. Like I was looking at this, the Charleston, the, yeah, the demographics. So we have, how, how, how the state does it. But then we, as a district, we all talk about it kind of differently. And wanted to, and so I wonder how you all, in the work that you've done, recommend to school districts? Because how, to school boards, how to categorize, or maybe categorize isn't the right word. But one of the things that came up in a couple of my sessions were, you know, the kids who are in poverty, that's not their choice to be in poverty. That's, that they are and, and so, and not to, I think this was, actually came up at the ones we were doing, Dr. Frazier, is, you know, not categorizing them, so kids so much as pupils in poverty. So I just wondered, and y'all don't have to answer this right, Smith, but I wanted to throw it out there. You know, I'd love it if the board could come up with some terminology that, um, is, is either proactive or positive, or just doesn't seem to put a student in a, in a category that they really can't control, kind of a thing. Does that make sense?
So I'll, I'll answer that. I'll answer that a couple of ways. Um, I'll, I'll give you two examples. This is going to be a longer answer than you really want to hear, so I apologize. But the first thing is, we don't recommend to you how or who in the district you want to target. So you as a board will decide who you want to target in the district, how, and what goals you want to set for those specific student groups. What I will tell you is that there's a difference between supporting students, um, and targeting the support of students based on demographic factors, et cetera, and labeling them or setting lower expectations for those students. So I'll give you an example. Uh, you may set goals around students who are, um, uh, students who are highly transient in the district, meaning those students who have a tendency to be highly mobile, um, and, and go from one school to another throughout the school year. You can target specific supports for those students. It doesn't mean you're labeling those students, but you can say as a goal, these, this is a group of students that we know, or let's say homelessness. This is a group of students that we know need additional supports. And so we're going to set a goal around providing additional supports for those students. Uh, the second thing I would share, uh, as you're setting goals, is it is perfectly fine to say we want to target, um, uh, to lower, uh, uh, low-income students, if you will, uh, or we want to target African-American males based on what your data suggests, et cetera. Uh, that is something that our school districts do quite often. Um, and sometimes you'll have to explain to the community why you set those targets. You'll have to share the data with the community about why you set the targets and the goals the way you did. Uh, but that is your job as a school board to say, we looked at the data, we listened to your input, and then we decided these were the goals that we want, that you wanted to have, uh, for the school district, uh, based on what we've seen, what we understand, and where we think the community needs to go to support kids. Does that, does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does answer my question that asked that question. What, what about, uh, designation like Toddler One Schools? Do you have any?
However you, however you choose to target the goals, what you're doing is saying to the superintendent, this is the, this is the goal we want you to accomplish. Um, and, you know, based on where we're going, where we see the district going, what we believe is important for the district. This is where we want you to focus, and this is the goal you want to accomplish. It's not exclusive of everyone else. It's not exclusive of raising achievement for all students or making sure everyone has a good, good, uh, education, but it does target a specific group. Um, uh, she probably won't want me to do this, but, um, one of the coaches that you have with you right now was a member of the school board, on the, the, the school board as the school board chair. And that school board set a target of improving student achievement for African-American males. Um, and then that super, that school board chair wrote an op-ed in the community paper to explain why the school board targeted African-American males, uh, given the performance in the school district and the need for the school board and the school system to focus on raising achievement for that specific group of students. So, uh, how you do it, uh, how you choose to do it is up to you. Um, but, uh, note that it is done quite often and it's based on what you see in your data, what you think your community needs. Uh, anything else? So Cindy, what, yeah, I'll turn it over to you, Cindy, because I know you want to talk about next steps.
Yeah, so I think what we'll do right now is take about a fifteen-minute break. Um, I don't know if it's possible for, uh, to provide a breakout room for our coaching group. Because what we'll do is go through the feed, the, what you all have just shared. Um, and then after the break, come back and, uh, use that as a jumping, kind of try to consolidate and organize what we've heard and come back to you all so we can start honing that, honing that down. Um, while you are on this break, what would be really helpful, um, is to, one, take a break and go do what you need to, but also, um, I heard Kate, for example, say that she has a guardrail list going. Um, we're, we're going to do the same thing with guardrails around a community value or guardrail that has risen to the top for you around, um, that needs to be protected or honored. Um, so a value that needs to be protected or honored, and if possible, the corresponding guardrail for that. You get five, um, individually, and we'll do a similar process. And then, um, so if you can be thinking about that while we're on break, is it possible for us to go into a break, breakout room? For our coaching group? No?
Maggie's doing that for you.
Oh, gotcha. Any questions on that, on what's happening? And we'll, we will come back at, uh, five after. Did I do math right? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, right. Thank you.
All right. Do we have everybody back and ready?
Almost. Thunderfakers coming in, but I think we're ready. Does Reverend Mack have his hand raised?
No, I think that's just the cursor on his screen.
Oh, it's a cursor. Okay. Thank you.
He got pulled away from a work thing here a bit too long ago. My mouse was on the work. Oh, sure. There's a guardrail. I don't think we need. Oh, you don't? Really? I, I, I think it is. I think we did. You just need different.
Okay, we're ready. Let's get started because we, we have a lot left to do in our sort of amount of time. What we did while, while during the break was reviewed the information that we, what we heard back from all of you. And I'm gonna ask, Kim, can you share your screen? So this is, and this is what will, first I'll go through, I'm gonna read down everything and then we can start at the top with goal one. What we heard was the want for a literacy goal for fifth grade students and measured by SC Ready and ELA. And then the decision points are, is it for all students? Students who are English learners, students who are Black, students who are Latinx, students with IEPs, or students in poverty, or some combination of that. The next thing we heard, you all talked about enrollment. However, an enrollment goal in and of itself does not necessarily speak to readiness for algebra. You could have an enrollment goal. You could have an enrollment goal and have students enrolled. Uh, the inadvertent consequence could be students and increase in enrollment without students actually being ready to be successful. So what we've put here, and again, everything up for discussion, is that the percentage of students who are algebra ready as measured by, and that's what we would need to know, is if there is a measurement um, for algebra readiness will increase, um, from blank to blank. Again, all of those decision points around what student group are we talking about? Then goal three is around algebra achievement, and that would be increasing um, or completing algebra with a C or above. And again, decision points on the population of students. And then the college career military ready goal, uh, uh, increasing that, um, percentage. And that again would be from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven and determining what student group that would be. So if we could start at the top with goal one literacy, um, is 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 there agreement that fifth grade? We heard a lot of fifth grade students, um, that fifth grade be in that level of of the specific population of students was that there seemed to be general majority on that. Do we, is that an agreement? You're all really little now, so I can't see any shaking heads or anything like that.
We're, we agree on fifth grade.
Okay. I do have a question. It came up in the sessions that I I feel like at some point it was mentioned, but I didn't have an answer. So and we don't have to answer it today, but in terms of messaging, there was concern around students who have passed the fifth grade at this point and what what's gonna be, um, what's gonna be done for them over the next several years. And so either, um, messaging, well, both messaging and an actual plan for to catch the students as much as we can who are already matriculated beyond the fifth grade.
Okay.
And my my question would be, why aren't we going with the research with third grade? And instead of fifth, and I know that fifth was what we discussed earlier. So I'm wondering if there are educators out there like myself who wonder why we have chosen fifth grade and not go with the research that says if you're not reading, um, at grade level by third grade.
Uh, I think one of the things that we shared, and this is up to you, uh, again, you can make the adjustment in the grade level. One of the things that we shared earlier, uh, was that even though you're setting a goal at a particular level or to particular grade level, in order to achieve that goal, it doesn't mean that the superintendent and the district might not set um, uh, goals, uh, leading goals that are established at earlier grade levels because they know they've got to hit those earlier grade level targets in order to reach the fifth grade goal. So, um, setting this goal at fifth grade doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to ignore third grade reading achievement as part of the, um, uh, as part of your, as part of the the actual strategy to achieve this goal.
Exactly, and, um, and so Fessnas, uh, the team, the the CCSD staff team have been working on interim goals, assuming that we would land on a goal of reading by fifth grade. So interim goal, we have two interim goals at least on this fifth grade reading. One is, uh, third grade reading level, it's measured by probably, uh, I already a map, excuse me. And then, uh, uh, in second, uh, interim goal is related to kindergarten kindergarten readiness assessment. So kids coming in, so we have a major effort to try and figure out how to get more kids enrolled in more rigorous, um, um, PK education. So we are not going to focus only on the fifth grade. And then another rationale on the fifth grade is that we have kids right now, second and third grade, fourth grade that are below grade level that we won't, you know, if we don't, um, we won't, if we don't address those kids right now, they won't be ready, excuse me, in the middle grade, so they're probably won't be ready on the fifth grade, but when they get into middle grade, hopefully that will have them ready.
Uh, finally, I'm speaking for, um, the superintendent and his team. But I would imagine when we get to the graduation goal, uh, that success on those, uh, college career um, and military readiness indicators, uh, are going to mean that you've still got to go back and address for those students who are in the middle grades and, uh, high school. They'll, you'll need to address shoring up wherever they might be, um, in terms of reading, in terms of math skills in order to be successful on those college career and military readiness goals. So again, as a board, you're not missing students by setting a a target at a particular grade level. Um, when you have goals down the line that involve improved student outcomes. Uh, the they will, there will be some targets behind that to let you know that you're going to hit those targets or those goals ultimately in twenty twenty-seven.
So can I ask, uh, the group, uh, do we want to hone down? Are we okay with fifth grade? And if so, hone it down to a smaller demographic, or do we want to just focus on all fifth graders?
I think on this particular one, all fifth graders.
I think it's a small enough cohort that it's gonna leverage a lot. What do y'all think? What do you think for the reading goal? Do you feel like it's okay to just focus on all fifth graders? Or do you, okay, or do you want to single out any groups?
Well, my question is, um, what is the exact, what is the actual all reading? Is it fifty-three percent?
Yeah.
Um, oh, that's pretty abysmal, all, yeah, all the possible.
Yeah.
Right.
Fifty-three.
Well, I'll try to. Points, this is seventeen percent. It was, oh, twenty-three percent, or it was any ten percent. But, yeah, none, none of them, well, but.
So white students are at seventy-seven percent. Well, I would, I would say focus on the bottom. Um, because I would guess too that the white students who are not performing are likely pupils in poverty or special education. So I would, I would say we should look at specific groups, but
Okay.
I'm also fine if you all want to put them in as interim goals. But I really think when you've got seventy-seven percent of your population performing, and then there are other populations that are, you know, twenty-three percent, ten percent, twenty-four percent. And frankly, when I look at the fact that students who are learning English for the first time are performing better than black students, that's, that's actually ridiculous. And so I do think the focus should be there.
Uh, if if I may add one additional thing, completely up to you again, uh, to decide how you want to do it. Um, the number of students in each of, uh, your student groups also makes a difference. Uh, if you have a small number, for example, of white students who are performing at seventy-seven percent, and you set an improvement goal, moving them from seventy-seven percent to eighty-seven percent isn't gonna put a dent in the overall district performance unless you move other student groups as well. Uh, does that make sense? Because if you've only got a few number of students, even if you move them ten, fifteen percentage points, it's not gonna change the district outcome significantly.
What is the percentage of white students? Okay, thank you, because I know that the African-American student, black students is almost fifty percent, right?
Yeah, and when you've only got like twenty-three percent of them performing, that means, I mean, almost half our system is actually not reading. Yeah.
I I agree with Courtney on this point.
So percentage of, uh, fifth grade black students reading on grade level?
I feel like black and Hispanic.
I would like to, yeah.
I agree, black and brown.
Black and black, okay, black and Hispanic?
Black and brown.
Black and brown.
Okay.
I know, I'm brown, too. I'm pretty brown. Sorry, we joke.
I I hear you, uh, I, um, superintendent, the important thing is superintendent understands who those populations are.
He's about to tell us real quick, but numbers.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
No, no, you, well, you go ahead and tell us.
Well, the percentage of of white students across the district that are, uh, reading on grade level, seven seven point one percent.
No, no, I want to know the percentage of students in the district who are actually white.
Oh.
Yeah, look, someplace else.
So we're just trying to understand.
Well, I I don't know, I, so, 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 let me say it this way. So we're looking at grades three through eight. So if you look at the white population in grades three through eight, and so the twenty twenty-two test, that number's ten thousand nine hundred and forty.
So that's around twenty-five percent. No, wait, no, ten thousand.
Ten thousand nine hundred and forty. That those are, uh, grades three through eight.
That's how many students are white.
That's right.
How many total students in those grades?
I don't have that right here. I have to.
How many white students then?
Hey, we can, we can get that.
So it's a number of students, six, six thousand eight seventy-four. It's a, it's a SC ready. So, so this is SC Ready, SC Ready, so the students that take their SC Ready are grades three through eight. And so here, this is all schools in the district, uh, black students in all those schools. And then, uh, that here are the, uh, the population numbers, six thousand eight seventy-four for twenty twenty-two.
And you're saying that the white student population.
According to this dash, this, this dashboard.
Yeah, I think you were, I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, you were about to add to goal one, the percentage of, um, African-American and Hispanic or black and Hispanic fifth grade students.
Actually, they wanted to add, they wanted to add black and brown. And my question to the superintendent was, do you, if, if the board tells you to improve black and brown reading on grade level, do you know, are, are you?
You know.
Is that specific enough to understand the population that they are wanting you to measure?
Well, we have a category called African-American or black. We have a category called, uh, Hispanic. Um, so that would, uh, capture, I would think, the majority of, um, of black and brown students. Would you say that would be the case, uh, Vanessa?
However, I I think we'll accept however makes sense and is most useful to you. I mean, I I'm speaking for everybody, but I think so.
Well, but well, for me, if it's all students, then the strategies that we are already working on to put in place are, are addressing the students where the, um, the lowest performing, lowest performance. So that would be our Title I school. If you take, in 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 non Title I schools, we have low performance relative to the entire population. So for instance, over at Carolina Park, they have, uh, seventy-seven point seven percent of the entire school is reads, meets or exceeds grade level in ELA, where it's forty, only forty-four percent of African-American. So at that school.
Okay, so.
To clarify, I was actually saying the terminology, I do think it's very important not to say all students.
Okay.
But I'm also, I'm gonna go with the will of the board, but I I do think it's important to be specific.
I I agree with that too.
Okay, so the question is, let's, let's bring it back to the question. Are we using the terms black and brown, or are we using the terms African-American and Hispanic?
I just think it's a bit dated to use the term African-American. I think we've settled as a culture that that is not the term.
Right.
Um, I I I don't belong to the Hispanic community or Latinx community, so I I don't feel I can speak for that community.
So, and I, I am not disagreeing, I am trying to help the board, um, decide, make sure that the superintendent knows which populations, when we say black, when the board says black and brown, when the the reporting, um, demographics are different than that, is that?
What about black and Hispanic?
So, yeah, so, so, well, my preference is that what we use the terminology that's aligned with the state. Uh, and so when the state reports out, they report out on, uh, black slash African-American and then Hispanic, and you talk about those two populations of black, black and brown students. So that, that, that way we are, we are completely aligned with what the state, uh, because the the data that we're gonna be reporting on the SC Ready, that's gonna be the goal.
And so we, uh, we are assuming that the, the last three categories on the sheet are all just, you know, I just don't want to exclude the any, the last three on the sheet would be captured in that somehow?
So the majority of our multilingual learners are Hispanic.
Okay.
Uh, the, um, we have, we have disproportionality on identifying African-American students especially it. So we will focus on on those. And then pupils, pupils in poverty. I mean, the reality is that, uh, the majority, I think, in the disregard minorities, families.
Okay, okay. Let's do that.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, but why students who are not reading on grade level, have we left them out?
Uh, I don't think that, that, that by focusing on this group, that means that we aren't going to have an impact on all students who need help. It's, I think that by naming these groups, we're also recognizing that we have huge racial disparities in the district in learning, and I think it is actually important to to name that.
Uh, and and also the, um, you know, with the, the EL curriculum, which we've put a lot of, um, confidence in, is that, uh, that's, that's being rolled out into non Title I schools also. So, uh, for instance, uh, Carolina Park over up in Mount Pleasant, uh, they are a pilot school, they were a pilot school for the second semester this year, this past year. And they're, they're, they're expanding that this year. So, so that, uh, that curriculum is for all students.
Okay, so is there any, um, so goal one, as you now see it, uh, any any concerns with that? Or are we okay to move on to the next?
We're okay to move on to the next. I'm speaking for the board.
Superintendent will, will bring the percentages.
Yep, we're not gonna worry about the percentages right now. We're just gonna get them, the goal, we're gonna just try to get the goal states, statements minus the percentages right now. So we're not worried about that at the moment. Okay. The algebra ready, um.
So I thought can I ask Ms. Waters, she brought this up first, um, to me, the goal, the algebra ready just feeds algebra achievement as long as we are clear that whatever sub, you know, like we decide to focus on black and Hispanic students again, that we're talking about the percentage of students completing algebra with a C compared to the total population of that same group, not the total population that took the class.
That makes sense.
So if we look at goal three, algebra achievement, but the percentage of students who are achieving or completing Algebra One with a C or above will increase. I just want to make sure that we're comparing that to the total population of the same students, not the total population taking algebra. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So the, it may need to be a grade level group we're talking about, like eighth grade. Again, it might need to be eighth grade or something like that to hone it down a bit more because we want them to take it earlier. I'm feeling from the rest of the members.
Okay, so are we at goal three at the moment?
Middle school, Algebra One.
Yeah, Dr. Fred.
I think.
Yeah.
Can you, can you call?
I don't think we need goal two if we, if we goal three in a responsible way.
Okay, so let's move.
I think the challenge, okay, we can, I think the challenge is that if you have the percentage of students completing Algebra One with a C or better, you can't divide that by any other denominator than all the other kids who are taking Algebra One. Because you're only looking at the completers, okay?
I don't agree.
It's not.
I think that what we were trying to accomplish here is more students being ready for Algebra One, more students being encouraged to enroll in Algebra One, and more students completing Algebra One. And, uh, what, so I want, by comparing the number who are making a C in that class to the total population that should be taking the class.
But how, how do you determine who the total population?
But how do you determine who the total population is that should be taking the class if you haven't done goal two?
Because the point is, is not that you, I mean, ultimately, we want, we want all of our high school students to graduate with algebra, right? They want, we want them all to take algebra. Right now, we're abysmal at that in some groups because we're not even really encouraging kids who are ready. But that's, that's.
So that's why we have goal two. So if we are looking at this from a goal two perspective of getting students enrolled, potentially from students in poverty who we know that there are limited courses within Title I schools. This is only a goal to 2027. Potentially, we might be able to reduce these goals.
I also think that that by adding a low, I know we don't want to pressure kids and make them feel like they have to take it, but I think having a goal doesn't mean that everybody has to take it. But I do think setting it in the lower grades opens up possibilities for kids because children also, you know, the range of options getting limited very early when you realize you haven't received what it takes to go to the next level.
Right.
So I think the sooner you give kids that advanced math, the better opportunity they have to come to the world of opportunity more prepared to make decisions based, and more confidently because they have had higher skills.
Are we gonna miss students though? I hear what you're saying, and I agree. I'm a little concerned that the students that aren't, are taking algebra but aren't making at least a C or in the higher grades and that they haven't been prepared. Are we gonna if we, if we do this correctly, obviously, we're gonna capture those students as well. I just wanna make sure we frame it.
Yeah, I think, I think in the goal two, having them be ready by a certain age is appropriate. And then in the achievement goal, maybe you take it off. You know what I mean? Because if you, if they're ready by eighth grade or seventh grade or whatever, whatever the district recommends, then we're at least opening up the opportunity and then we deal with the achievement later. So I do like that they're two explicit goals.
Okay.
Let me ask Vanessa, weigh in if you have no mind. So Vanessa, if we increase the percentage of students that are prepared to take, they're ready to take Algebra I, so you have that increased by the seventh grade, then that then gets to both sets improvements for both, for students. Seventh grade ready, eighth grade successfully completing. Assuming, assuming, assuming that as an interim goal, we would have the actual something around enrollment. So we, so if kids are not ready, then the, the, just enrollment is not going to be adequate.
Right.
Okay, so if we can come back to, let's just do this one thing at a time. Goal two, algebra ready, the percentage of students who are eligible, Algebra I ready by the end of seventh grade?
So.
Yes.
End of seventh grade. That's important. Because otherwise, by seventh grade is the end of sixth grade. Okay. As measured by, what would be the measure, Mr. Kennedy?
Map scores. So either map or I ready. Yeah, so, so, so by, I would say by our interim assessments, assessment, whatever that may be, some schools might be taking I ready, some might be taking map.
Okay, so by district, except we'll, we'll want it to be a summative assessment for your end goal.
I'm sorry.
So it will be that, so because this is a goal, it needs to be the end of, the end of cycle, map or I ready? So the end of cycle district assessment. End of year district assessment.
End of year, okay. So it can't be map, an incremental, during the year assessment. It has to be an end of the year assessment.
Well, then that could, that could very well be the state test, SC ready then. If that's.
It could be, it could be the SC ready. Yep, you could make it SC ready as well. You could make it either one of them. Again, the interim goal could be based on map or I, or I ready. That's what the superintendent can determine. But if you say by the end of seventh grade, then you're selecting an assessment at the end of seventh grade. It could be anyone else.
I think we do have to be specific here because then how's the board gonna look at from an accountability perspective? And then the community, is it map? Is it I ready? Is it SC ready? I think we do have to be specific and obviously we're versus the interim assessment.
SC ready is the end of.
We're trying to get input from Vanessa.
Okay.
Vanessa.
When do you get your SC ready scores back?
I think Vanessa's trying to talk.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, come use the mic.
I was just gonna offer that whatever metric the board wishes to use, we'll want that metric back in the spring in time to make decisions about eighth grade scheduling. So it'll be important that we're not receiving something in, in, you know, the end of August in, in the student's eighth grade year because at that point it will be.
So how do you normally do that? How do you normally prepare a student with their IGP to take algebra?
So I think in order to prepare a student, we'd want to triangulate a couple of points of data to make sure that students are ready to take algebra in eighth grade and that as a board, we're potentially prioritizing readiness equaling enrollment.
Okay. So would it be better to know where they are at the end of sixth grade?
I think that knowing where they are by the end of the first semester in seventh grade, whether or not they're approaching readiness would be, would be appropriate.
So in that case, Vanessa, then instead of the SC ready, then it would be one of our districts interim assessments then, I ready or, or a map.
I think it would ideally be a triangulation of more than one data point.
So we need it to be ready by the end of the first semester of seventh grade.
So because that's not a summative assessment, Cindy, what, what is, what do you think about what was just shared?
So I think, and Ray, you can jump in here. I think that if there, if if you have a readiness measure, a a readiness measure that is a triangulation of three data points that the district uses to determine, to determine that measurement that you look at, at the, by the end of seventh grade, I think that that is fine. So, you know, and calling it as measured by the, the district's algebra readiness measure, and then define that as that triangulation. It doesn't have to, I don't know that it has to be defined in the goal, but it needs to be directly in the goal.
And the only thing I'll add, the only thing I'll add to that is, you know, you've got language by the end of seventh grade, but you don't have to keep in the goal by the end of seventh grade. So if you chose to do a mid-year measure that would say a January measure, and that January measure was predictive of success in Algebra I, then you're perfectly fine using the January measure.
Right. Yeah, I think that we have to change that language if we want to use the triangulation. So maybe by January of the seventh grade? Okay.
Or it's just percentage of seventh grade students who are Algebra I ready? And then it's in January 2022. Whenever you're measuring it, then we need to have a month. And we also need to do that on all the goals. They also, they need to not just have a year, they need to have a month and a year. So that, that will be something that when the superintendent brings those data points, when those are measured specifically, will need to be in there. Okay, so we've got seventh grade students are algebra ready by that, they're the district's algebra ready readiness indicator. Are we having a specific group of seventh grade students identified here?
We talked about that earlier, doing that. Do you want to do that?
I mean, I just go back to my point of, same point about the about ELA, about literacy. We have so few students of color in general enrolled in Algebra I, ready for Algebra I. We don't even have it offered in all, you know, in all the middle schools in enough, you know, like, in enough, at a high enough quantity for seat, you know, for the seats. So I think it would push the system to actually do something different, to focus on students of color in this sense because it'll, it'll have to change some of the course offering structure as well.
I agree. And it's 11% for African Americans, for our black students.
So are we, so is there a consensus around using the same?
The same group.
Same grouping as before for, as the ELA? The literacy goal?
The black enrollment for black students is 11% and for Hispanic is 15. White is 43%. So. What grouping do you prefer? I'm, I'm good with the same as ELA or?
Yeah, I think, I think it's the same, same.
I think it's the same. I also think that the white student number should be higher.
I absolutely.
I actually think on this one, maybe it's a little bit different just because it's also low, but I do. Mr. Kennedy, I mean, what would your recommendation be in that sense? Because it's really low across the board. Obviously, we have another significant disparity gap, but it's, it's quite low in general.
I would say that 43% for our white students that we are not preparing enough of our kids regardless of their, their racial background, ethnicity. Would you say that, Vanessa? So with, when we look at the Algebra I, the number of students that are enrolled in Algebra I, we only have like 43% of our white students. And so the question is, is that something that we need to pay attention to also in the, in the, in the, in this goal? And because it looks, it appears to me that 43% that we're not preparing enough of our white students ready, get enough of them ready for either getting them ready for Algebra I nor are not having the access.
So I agree with that. I think that there will be potentially some.
We can't hear, can we, I'm sorry, Vanessa. We're gonna make you go to a microphone.
Sorry. So my question would be sort of related to the specific goals. I would agree with your assessment. And then my next question would be, is it a preparation issue or a scheduling issue? And so that might be where your incremental goals come in. So are there students who would have otherwise been offered the course but aren't because of scheduling or staffing? Or are we not offering the course for other reasons?
Yeah, I think in some instances, and I don't know what the, what the rate is, but we don't, it's an access access issue.
And that's, but this, these are percentages for eighth grade only, by the way.
Okay, can we, can I ask from the CGCS staff if there's a way to say all students with attention to, to a widening disparity gap? I mean, is there a way to just, or is that, does that become too complicated?
That's a separate goal. So you're, if you want to increase the percentage of students from X to Y, that's one thing. If you want to reduce the gap between students from X to Y by win is a separate goal. So it's two different, so you can have a gap goal, reducing the gap goal, or you could have kind of a percent of kids ready goal, but reducing the gap is a different goal.
And we are also.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, could we focus on all middle schools? Could we say that, like, would that address it, like, expanding course offerings? Like, I know the, and I know this is a different goal because we're talking about readiness.
Yeah, I would.
That would be a strategy.
That's, that's a strategy, exactly. I was gonna say the same thing. That's what you're talking about is how the superintendent will accomplish it. And the superintendent has to identify what the root cause of the issue is and address that root cause.
Okay.
Or root cause is.
Well, I've got nothing. I'll, I'll say, it seems like access needs to, all students need to be ready. However, I'm just concerned that in all students, we'll have what we always have, which is many students being left behind based on race, socioeconomic status, et cetera.
Well, and if, what we're looking is enrollment, which is different than readiness. And if you look at the math for third through eighth grade, you see that disparity and where white, white students are about 73% metered, exceeds black or 17% and Hispanic or 27.5. Now, that's more than, that's not just for algebra, that's third through eighth grade math.
That's interesting because it would seem then that we would have another goal potentially. I'm not saying we do. I'm not trying to complicate things, but if it seems like we have an access issue, which is why only 43% are getting in, but we very clearly have a significant disparity gap on SC ready that is more significant than that 43%. So I would agree with, with what's been said before.
Just for clarity, so the, what you're looking at here, the French, is SC ready for grades three through eight, not just.
Right.
Okay.
Right, right. Yeah, that's third through eight, so.
SC ready for third through eighth, 73% of white students are meeting or seating, but then as an example, and then only 43 are enrolled in Algebra I.
But that's just the eighth graders.
Right.
So a lot of those white students may be taking it ninth grade or seventh grade. We don't know because we're only looking at eighth grade. So I would, it might be reasonable to take the readiness for algebra goal and make it that a subgroup of black and Hispanic students. And then the or, I think the access issue is already part of what would have to be addressed if, if we're gonna try to get more students enrolled.
I know we're sort of going around and around on this, but I do think it, it, it's kind of clear to me that we need some additional data, some aggregation, some disaggregation of data because it's very difficult to, it's very difficult for me to commit to focusing on all students in this readiness instance, if all students are ready and the issue is access because it's a separate problem entirely. But I also don't want to step over if, if when we disaggregate that data, there is not a significant gap. I'm just, I'm just a little bit.
So we, we have the data, well, eighth grade algebra that, that shows by demographic who, the, the amount, the percentage of students that are enrolled, or the number of students that are enrolled, and the, and the percentage are the number that are by group that's successfully completing. What we, what that analysis did, it showed that in some cases that we have an access problem, but we haven't explored that across the entire district yet, you know, in enough detail to be able to provide that information right now. I mean, not saying that we can't get there, but we just don't have it today.
I think also, just as a reminder, once you establish a goal, and if you establish the goal for all students, the superintendent may identify in his interim goals that there are different solutions to this problem for different groups of students, i.e. some might be an access concern, others might be a student achievement concern coming out of seventh grade. But once you've established the goal, you, again, it's their job to go back and say, okay, what are the issues and how do I make sure this gets addressed?
Okay, thank you. No, it's helpful.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to algebra ready goal, goal two, where are we at with this? Are we at all seventh grade students? Are we still wanting this goal one? Because I'm not clear.
I think we are. The whole reason we really, is really talking about the eighth grade kids taking it and making sure we have access for it was because it makes such a difference in what they can then do in high school. So I think we do, we really need, but we, if that's gonna be the focus for third, fourth, fifth, sixth, you know, all of those grades. I think we do need a readiness.
I agree.
Okay. So I think, I think I'm hearing that we're okay with having the goal. Now, are we having it? So I think, I think I'm hearing that we're okay with having the goal. Now, are we having it in all student goal, or are we designating it the same as you did for Goal One?
Let me ask some questions, somebody else walked in. So, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
Go to the mic, please.
We need some experts. We around here.
So we're talking about Algebra One, and so we have like forty-three percent of our white students across the district and eighth grade, that is, that enrolled in Algebra One, at least last year, whatever year it was, yeah, last year. And it, it, it's, the, the, that's relatively, I think, low number. And would you say that that's attributable to, uh, access? We don't have Algebra One programmed in enough schools, or we don't have, you know, the scheduling?
Or is it a?
Or something else, or is it a readiness?
It, it's a readiness piece, because we do have that honors rubric that we utilize to identify kiddos who are ready for algebra or geometry or English one. So if there's an instant where we have kids in a school that don't have that access, we provide that either through distance learning, some type of virtual opportunity, because we currently have those opportunities now for kids. For instance, in a school where they're qualifying for geometry, they don't have a teacher that's certified in geometry, or the schedule doesn't allow for the kids to take geometry. We do distance learning for those kids. So I would say it's more readiness versus the access piece, because of that rubric that we use to identify those kiddos.
But then should we say all? Because that number is so low.
Yeah, I would say all, okay.
Okay. That, so.
Lauren, does that sit well with you?
It does.
All right.
I, I agree.
And one clarification, this is a draft call, so I'm hoping that that quote District's Algebra Readiness Indicator will be further defined when we actually vote on the goals.
Yep. Okay, now to Goal Three. So from what I heard, um, you say, Dr. French, is that this isn't actually, uh, you don't want the denominator to be those completing, you want the denominator to be all students. So I think.
I don't know if that, if everybody.
If that's still not.
Uh, I was gonna add that if you make this, if you make the denominator here all students, then you actually address the enrollment challenge for eighth grade from the preparedness perspective, because what you're really saying is if you divide by all students, uh, the percentage increasing to C or better, it's the quality of the student instruction in Algebra One, as well as increasing the percentage of students who are at that place in Algebra One. So you're actually accomplishing two things in one goal.
Yeah.
If you divide by all students.
Does everyone agree with that? Okay.
Qu- qu- my question is gonna be now, why did y'all make us go through all of that? No, um, so just to be, for clarification, so if we, if we do make the denominator all students and we, um, address the readiness issue, then we eliminate Goal Two. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, we're not. It, we're eliminating that access piece, right? Because then we're saying in Goal Three, we don't have access for everybody.
I got you, okay.
I think.
So I think what the goal needs to say is the percentage of students achieving a grade C or higher by end of eighth grade, or the, the percentage of eighth grade students achieving a C or higher in Algebra One will increase. That takes away the completer denominator. Okay. Now, is there a specific population of students, or is it all eighth graders? Or a specific population of eighth grade students or all eighth grade students?
I think it should be all because it's so bad right now. I mean, across the board, it's miserable, but.
Yep, yeah, I would say so too.
Keep it with all, like with Goal Two?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Okay, Goal Four. So we're good on, everybody okay at where Goals, Goals Three sits? Yep, okay, um, and then?
Cindy, we.
Yep, yep.
I don't know if y'all took this into consideration. Currently, we do have Algebra One in seventh grade for kiddos that are on that advanced math pathway. So when you're creating a goal, are we saying that for the majority of our kiddos, this is what we want outside of that group that's already been identified in sixth grade or fifth grade, we should say, as those advanced math track scholars? Just something to consider. So it's clear when you're making the goal.
Could it be by eighth grade, like?
Yeah, that's what we were thinking.
Eighth graders?
Okay, so the percentage of students achieving a C or higher in Algebra One by end of eighth grade?
Yeah, so then you cover the seventh grade. Good, good.
So it was there. Thank you for that. It was there to begin with, and then I moved it. Sorry about that.
Y'all shouldn't leave us. Don't, don't go.
Yeah, really. Go ahead, start looking at number four, I call four for us, please.
Okay, so the percent, the percent of students in the four-year cohort who are college, career, and/or military-ready will increase from and um, these percentages, I think, were put in there already by the superintendent. Um, and I think what we heard was that many of the indicators that everyone had raised up around financial literacy, around um, not everyone is going to choose to go to college, um, and also around those life-type skills would be would be encompassed in this goal. And I guess let, let us know if you heard, if we heard wrong, if you heard.
There's no, um, there's nothing wrong in it. My only concern is whether somewhere we can explicitly name those other things, because I think the way we think about college and career readiness in South Carolina doesn't take into account like communication skills, financial literacy and all of that. And so I just would want to explicitly state it somewhere else that we're talking about a well-rounded student and not just like this one indicator that they have to, to meet, which might be an ACT, which has nothing to do with those, those other soft skills.
College and career ready metrics for that sixty-seven percent is several different tests. So I have to meet at least one of them.
So I think it's by the, the, and I think we need to add that to the goal, college, college, career, and/or military-ready as measured by the state college and career readiness indicators, or what is the official term for that?
College and career readiness indicators.
And that tests the soft skills as well?
That's eight different, but does the work keys address the soft skill?
But Mr. Kennedy said only one has to be done.
That's correct. So, so you, so a student could, um, to your point, Ms. Warris could do well on the ACT and, um, and, and meet, meet this career, college and career readiness goal, but not be, um, ready to communicate and that type of stuff.
Is there, is there a way that, is there any way that we track the profile of the South Carolina graduate on, because that has world-class knowledge, world-class skills, and life and career characteristics? So, but is there any, is there any way where like, in those life and career characteristics, integrity, self-direction, global perspective, perseverance, work ethic, interpersonal skills, but is there any way we're measuring that, or is that just the ideal profile?
I don't think we are, are we, yeah.
Well, they should.
Yeah, how do we, how could we measure it?
Yeah. Can we have a microphone? We can't hear when, when.
Yeah.
I said, so those are soft skills, but I, I think if we can kind of maybe sit and have a meeting in the minds, that's probably a really good conversation to have with Rich. Rich Gordon, who knows, or has a lot of knowledge about the, you know, college and career readiness, work-based skills pieces. So maybe it's just worth having a conversation with him to say outside of what they may do, uh, are, are masters of part of work keys, right? If they don't master that, like Mr. Kennedy gave us an example, but they pass the ACT, how can we ensure that those kiddos have those skills as well? So I think it's worth having a conversation to see how we could possibly do that, because, you know, that's, that's a.
May I make another suggestion as well? I think it's, uh, in line with what was just, uh, in line with what was just shared, and that is perhaps considering two goals here, again, uh, one on the college career readiness as measured by the state's college career readiness assessment, and then adding a Goal Five, and exploring the possibility of adding a Goal Five that has those soft skills specifically measured that you've, uh, shared earlier. Uh, right now, you don't have a measure for it, but it would be a fifth goal that you would create a measure for.
So I'm, I'm wondering, um, I'm wondering if, if we were, instead of doing a goal, if we make that a guardrail? And, and then.
Michelle said that.
That, yeah, that would allow us then to develop those, uh, those measures. How do we determine whether or not a student is, is, is ready or not?
I think it's important, regardless of how we address it, I think it's important that it is addressed, because there were too many kiddos expressing their concern that when they graduate, they have those soft skills. I mean, they constantly said, you know, the ability to be able to communicate, um, you know, financial literacy, and so I, I think more, as in response to that, uh, and I'm not caught up on whether it should be a goal or not, but I, I would like to see it included in a way that they know we are responding to them as well as addressing the.
Well, I think, uh, defer here to Joe and Michelle, but I, I think it, it, it might be it, it, we might be able to get there quicker if we do the guardrail. I mentioned earlier that we have the, uh, we have this task force that's working on what students need to be able to know, do, including soft skills by each grade, and so we could carve out of that, uh, the guardrails associated with it, I think.
I, I think that's a, a great idea, and I think we could write that guardrail for you in our sleep. Uh, the superintendent shall not allow a student to graduate without the necessary soft skills for success in life.
Okay, so on this fifth, or on this fourth, so right now, we are not adding a fifth goal. We have this, um, college, career, uh, and, and our military-ready um, goal. Is it an all-student goal, or are we specifying populations?
I will call this, I'll, go ahead.
I think that goal was grounded or framed in that four-year cohort, so I think it could apply to that same group of students.
So all, all students then, yeah. And then, so all students, um.
Okay, the board, are we, is everyone good on this one?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Good job. Your draft goals are ready for the next steps?
Well, I have, I, I'm sorry, I have a question on the last one. So, so, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not understanding why we're specifically, um, explicitly calling out the military component here, since college and career readiness include um, a, a, a military indicator.
Okay, we can take it, take it off.
Okay.
So.
I think that's because in some states, that's what they do, and they're, they're just used to that.
I see.
All right. Does it look all right now? College, so do we, I think we need to be, college, is it going to say college and/or career-ready?
But yeah, college and/or.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, so the next steps that will happen with these goals is that the superintendent and his team will, um, will get those baseline and target measures put in there, as well as the starting date, ending date, the specificity around the month, and then also begin working on the interim goals for those. And then, um, I see we have about fifty-one minutes left. Can we get started on a guardrail conversation?
I just have a question on a goal. I think a lot of us mentioned like the SEL, life skills, mental health piece. I still think that that should potent, potentially be encompassed in a goal.
Okay, do you have, is there a measurement for SEL um, knowledge and skills? And, and if there, if there is, great, and if there isn't, that's still okay, and a goal could still be written. However, it would probably need to have a, a pushed-out, um, baseline date and ending. Yeah, until such time as a, as a measure could be established.
If we made it a goal, could we do, could we make the goal around, um, students having completed coursework on it? Because I know like at the West Ashley CAS, when I was there, like, the kids were so, um, so well-versed in it, and so I asked the principal, how, how do they know this? And he said, oh, it's, it's this X program that they all take, and it's online, and, and they're engaging with it. So maybe it's like them having taken that course or something?
That would be helpful, a mental health test.
It's like a, it's social and emotional learning curriculum, but that they're doing online. Um, and, and maybe like not having it localized to that one school, but having it across um, the system would be really important. I mean, Dr. Fraser was there. The kids were phenomenal. And they understood very well at each level, that second question, like, what should they be able to do after whatever, you know, all the levels? They were like, um, regulate oneself at elementary school, um, do conflict resolution at middle school, and then, you know, I mean, they were very clear. So I'm just wondering if we could utilize something like that. Oh, really?
So the goal that you suggested, I, I'll take you back to, I think you've already had, and I wasn't a part of it, but I think you've already had a conversation about inputs, outputs, outcomes. Um, and if you say that you want students to have taken a course, uh, what you're basically doing is counting how many kids went through a course, which is really an output, not necessarily a measure of what the kids now know. Now, you may feel like they know a lot, but it's not really a measure of what they know. It's just a measure of how many kids actually took the course. Um, so I, I would guard against setting a goal around how many kids take a course.
But that might be a, a course that would be helpful to them. Um, and I wonder, what is that?
Could we look at maybe doing it as a guardrail, and then, and then we, if we can't, we could come back for a goal? Or, or. God, Williams, Michelle. What do y'all, what, are, what, are y'all familiar with the course, the SEL program that?
Over at West Ashley?
That Courtney's talking about?
I'm just concerned that all of our goals are very, very academically driven, and we don't have anything that's kind of supporting the overall well-being of students, and I think that that's gotta be a priority within the district. And if I'm off there, then we can move on.
So let me ask, um, the council, did I hear one of y'all say a couple minutes ago, a few minutes ago? That although that it may be permissible to establish a goal now without having created, without having a set of measures that we can readily, uh, uh, attach to the goal, and that we would create, we, we have an opportunity to, uh, to, uh, create the goal and then be able to establish the measure?
As far as. Yeah. Yeah, and so what, what you need to be clear on is that it's a measure about what students know and are able to do, not a measure of how students feel at a particular moment, not a measure of how the world is occurring to students at a particular moment. Um, it is what they actually know or are able to do. We don't, right now, there aren't a lot of tools in existence that actually measure social, emotional learning or, um, mental well, mental well-being, um, as a, what students know or are, or are able to do. It's often like the panorama surveys and, you, you know, around. It's often like the panorama surveys and, you, you know, around castle competencies and various things like that. Um, and so those are not measures of what students know and are able to do. Um. So what we often advise, because there are many districts who have, um, who run into the same issue because. Um, a, around social, emotional learning and, and mental health and wellbeing. And some districts do, I think, um, I'm not sure if this is what Ray was referring to earlier. There wasn't, is it a tool to measure it? And so the superintendent can figure out what it would take to measure that and the price tag, you know, because you can measure anything. It's just a matter of how much is it going to cost to develop the tool and, um. And then come and, and is the board willing to, you know, is it? Does it rise to the priority level of taking that amount of resources to develop that tool and measure it that way? Um, or is it something that can be achieved? And, and we've had maybe just one or two districts who have determined that. Um, that they're going to go ahead and do that, which is why then you're not, probably not going to start measuring for another year or two. And then, um, the other option is to write a guard rail around social, emotional learning and wellbeing.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, Lauren.
No, 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 that's fine, you, you, you go ahead.
Well, and it may still be a guard rail, but, um, one of the things I'm wondering is in terms of what students know and be able, should know and be able to do. Does that come out in like disciplinary infractions? Um, like is that a way to measure, you know, if, if students are not having. Altercations among one another, if there are certain types of offenses. I'm thinking also about the data on all the students with the vaping and how they're correlating that to like inability to cope with what's happening around them. Are there some? Are there some statistics we do, or data we do track? That would help us get an indication of how well, because I don't, it doesn't matter to me if it's a goal or guard rail. Just want to know that we're listening and paying attention to how kids are doing.
Yeah, I think, um, you could, for example, let's say discipline referrals. Uh, you could say, we're going to increase SEL to decrease discipline referrals. Discipline referrals could decrease because teachers stop referring kids to the office or principals say you can't refer kids to the office. But you really haven't developed in the kids, improved social skills for conflict resolution, et cetera. So you can change some outcomes without actually addressing what you're trying to address, which is why. The focus is on measuring what students are able to do. So even with conflict resolution, you can give me a conflict resolution training course. I can tell you I like it, but I might not be any better at conflict resolution in the heat of the moment. It doesn't change anything. Does that make sense?
It does, makes absolute sense, thank you.
I have a question for our superintendent. Um. If we wanted to develop a way to measure. What students are able to do. With social, emotional skills. Would we, would that take away from what we need to use ESSR money for? Because I know that one of the big pushes from the community for ESSR money was to address mental health issues. Would. Do we have the resources there to develop a tool so that we would be able to use it in the future?
Well, I, I would say with caveat, yes, but, um. Not knowing what they, uh. A development would look like, I would, I can't say for certainty, for certainty.
I guess that I just want to make sure that, you know, I think it's valuable to, to try to do something like that. And yet I do want to recognize that we have. Limit, limited resources and that we have four goals that we really want to achieve. Um, so. It, we, I guess we have to pay attention to that, just where, whether or not we have the resources to develop a tool. Um, on our own or if we need to work with what.
Well, I, I would say that it's going to take resources, whether it's a tool that we develop or a, uh. A set of guard, guardrails that we, uh, work through.
Yeah. Can they do a guard?
No, I'm just, no, no, that's not fair, I'm saying it's going to cost, it, it'll be some resources regardless of which way we go.
Correct, a, a goal or a guard rail, it would still take resources.
It's just a matter of what the resources are going to, right? Cause the resources for, for measuring a goal would be going toward. Figuring out how to measure it and then toward the strategy to accomplish it. Resources toward a guard rail would go toward providing whatever it is needed to honor it.
And Cindy, when we establish the goals and then the interim goals are put in place, are we communicating the guardrails? The, in the same way that we're communicating the goals so the, the community. Yeah, so they do understand that we are trying to encompass all of their input?
Definitely.
Okay.
And now also with. I want to make sure I understand what's happening, uh, council across the country. I think I heard you say that there aren't many districts, if any, that have actually created. A set of, uh, measures in this, in this area. And I, 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 uh. Man, I don't want to take on, you know, put a man on the moon type thing. Um, by, by going through a lot of research and development. And creating a tool that may not get us there.
Well, there, there's a couple, uh, and Ray, you might know better than me, but I, I know of one, maybe two districts that are exploring that. And I'm not sure how far they've gotten.
So what, what, what would it, if we wanted to do it as a guard rail, what would that look like? Ray, since you're so good at.
Go, Ray.
I wish, um, I think if you're going to create it as a guard rail, what you really want to do is make sure that, for example, the superintendent shall not let a student go into or exit middle school. Um, without having, uh, access or, um. Uh, a cou- a course around high-quality, social, emotional learning, uh, that sort of thing. And then that, what you're essentially saying is we value social, emotional learning. We want kids to get that experience. Um, we want kids to get that, those, uh, opportunities, but we're not going to create it as a goal of what, of a measure of what students know or able to do. Does that make sense?
Yep, that's great. Lauren, what?
And you could use, and you could use terms like high quality to make sure that now how you define high quality, how the superintendent defines high quality, you can measure that on. Uh, just about anything, but those are the types of things you might be able to do.
Sounds great, thank you. So would you be good with that, Lauren? I sure would. Okay. Got it.
Okay, so right now I think I've heard that we have. Two guardrails in the running, one around social, emotional. Learning and what was the?
The other one was, I didn't get the very end of it, but Ray said it, the superintendent will not allow students to graduate without the soft skills. Finish the sentence.
Needed to be successful.
You need to be successful, there you go.
Was it something, was that right, Ray?
Needed, needed to be successful after graduation.
Okay.
We may have to define soft skills.
Needed for post-secondary success or something like that.
Okay, we got two. Okay.
Okay.
I think there was a third, however you want to describe it, uh, there's a third around parental involvement, if I'm not mistaken.
We talked, yeah, we, we talked, that we talked about maybe doing a parental involvement one. I, um, what did I, what did I? I, I did, I, I did one that said this took from input we'd gotten. Stop only listening to the loudest voices, increase number of parents involved, but I know that's not.
It's all goes together, right?
It all goes together. Um, so I don't know how we do a increased parents and a stop avoid.
What could we? Contrax, like, you know, they do it like eating street. I mean, could we at least concentrate maybe on the middle, elementary school? I, I don't know if even they are successful or whether.
That's an idea. One, one thing I heard in a couple of, more than a number of sessions. Was stop, they, they wanted the board to have meetings at a time where it was more accessible to parents, but.
That sounds like a board guardrail and not a superintendent guardrail.
That's great, good.
Yeah, then that, and that sounds like something, like a governance improvement process that you all can. Or that the board can determine.
When it comes.
Moving forward.
When it comes to parent, um, the parent piece, I think parent engagement has to be the thing, because like the involvement is them coming back.
Yes.
And we can't necessarily be accountable for that part. But I do think that we need something around parent engagement and it does need to be stronger than. Just like surveys and phone calls, because people made it very clear, um, that they wanted, um, to be, to be brought into more understanding. Of what the district is doing and how their children's education is going.
But that's again a board. Uh, like a board goal or something for the board to work on.
No, I'm not talking about the board, the superintendent. Yeah, the superintendent, like the staff, like.
Okay. Okay. I wonder if we should have something along the lines of a parent handbook, like we have a student code of conduct.
So let's not get into the strategy, let's get into the values. So right now we have parent, we're talking about parent engagement. Um, so. Does anybody have an idea of what a guardrail? How a guardrail could be and do you all remember? Do you all remember guardrails and how they're written?
How they're written is fuzzy.
Just do the.
Remind us how they're written.
Okay, so, um, let me see if I can get back to. That it's, they're written as the, the, um. Thou shalt not, and. It's a prohibition on superintendent authority. So. Let me get this up here.
But it can't be too broad, it has to, it's like.
It needs to be, yeah, could, would it be something like, um, the superintendent shall not, or thou shall, yeah, shall not, um, allow. Parent engagement, um. Well, I'm trying to think about a measure, like if parents need to be able to check a box and say they've been engaged and there's like.
We don't have.
It can't fall below. Oh, it doesn't have to be measurable?
It doesn't, it's not a smart goal, it's not like a smart goal, but the interim goals that the superintendent brings. The interim guardrails would be smart, but the overall guardrail doesn't have to be.
Okay.
Is that correct, Cindy?
That's right, so the guardrails are written as thou shalt not statements. Um, you, or do not statements, and there's some examples. And these are just examples, um, not suggesting that any of them are a fit for all of you, but, um, or for your community. But that it's what the superintendent is not allowed to do as they are working toward achieving the goals. Um, so a parent engagement one might be, uh. Do not, um, do not operate without a robust, robust engagement of, uh, of parents. Across all demographic groups.
Say that one more time.
Robust engagement, do not.
Operate without.
Got a robust engagement of. All parental groups or had, had you.
Oh, yeah.
Parent guardians or parents or guardians. That sounds pretty good.
Does sound vague.
Yep, and so you all need to, yeah, that's. That was just a spitball and so that's something that you all need to determine. If there's more specificity.
Yeah.
Um, could, this may be. Uh, so could there be something about, uh, the superintendent shall not make, um. Like decisions about the, the, the goals and guardrails. With, or, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out how to make sure that the superintendent has to get parent. Feedback and input before making certain educational decisions, but not go. I'm afraid to say it because like I don't want it to go to the level of like the classroom, but like broad sweeping goals that really do need to get buy-in. Like what we just did, um. I don't know, I'm, I'm nervous in saying this because we gotta.
So, uh, I'm looking at it, a document that says possible CCSD guardrails that came from the, uh. Uh, from the council here, and one of them says the superintendent will not present major initiatives to the board of trustees without engaging school, district and community stakeholders.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
So we can, we, you know, so I mean, it doesn't say parents, but we can, we can modify that if it, if it's about parents.
Cause I'll be honest, what these community engagement sessions, um, really unearthed for me is that, that we have a hard time pulling in parents and students. Um, it just really, and I'm not saying the district, the board did, I'm gonna say the board did, but. Um, but the students and the parents had the, the, you know, like I said earlier, the richest things to say. So I do think changing that from just like the community, because the community tends to be the usual suspects for us. And we need to be hearing from the people who are actually impacted by the system. Or who are actually participating in the system, I should say.
Yeah, I think we should always indicate that we want to hear from students.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that the, the school community.
If we can only have five, could we have the one that say parents and students?
So here's. Here's where I think about students. Uh, so you mentioned early on, uh, in this meeting, Ms. Waters, that I think you term you use was student agency. And that is something that, uh, we do not do a good job on. So I would propose that we actually have a separate.
Okay.
Guardrail that specifically calls out student agency.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys talked a few minutes ago about all the input you got from West Ashley CAS.
Mm-hmm.
From students that's driving some of this work right here today. Um, so I would, um, offer that, that's, that's, that's a guardrail for me.
I agree.
I agree with that. I think, I think with, um, the, the guardrail that you read out, the. I know that there's a district. In the council that mentioned they had a similar guardrail, but it was kind of vague. And we want to be careful that we aren't setting up a situation where the superintendent. Has to come to us about every little decision they make in the school. Or in a school or in the district. So, um, it needs to be something that is clearly, a little bit clearly defined, otherwise you're going to have. It, I think it too much limits the authority that superintendent should have in making decisions. But there are obviously important operational decisions for specific schools where that school needs to be involved. I, I'm trying to figure out how to do it and. Ray might remember what I was talking about, or no, wait, maybe, maybe Cindy would remember, because I came up in one of our cohort trainings. I just don't want to call out the school district. So, but, so you're muted, Cindy.
Yeah, I saw that now, um. So I think what, I think that a couple of things here, one, um. That the superintendent will bring back those interim measures to that indicate what his interpretation of that mean, means. Uh, or what he believes the interpretation of your guardrail is. And so you'll be able to see when he brings those back, if it hits on what it is that the board. Um, is trying to protect and honor through their guardrail.
Right.
If, so what I heard, Superintendent Kennedy, would you mind reading that guardrail one more time that you read?
The superintendent will not present major initiatives to the board of trustees without engaging school, district and community stakeholders.
What can we say, students, parents, community and staff?
So what I was going to suggest, and I, and I think, I think community, I mean, I think. Um, without engaging, say again, community.
Without engaging school, district and community stakeholders.
Impacted, most impacted by the decision? That's kind of what I heard earlier is that you want, you want the superintendent to engage the people most impacted by the decision.
Right, which would be.
So adding those words, that would be. Um. Those stakeholder, school and stakeholder groups. So that would, um.
When we said school, do we need to define that as meaning not just the admin and staff, but it's also the parents and students? Is that, would that help?
Can we say schools instead of school district, so schools and community stakeholders?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because the district is kind of making the decisions.
That would be who, who are most impacted.
Yeah.
Actually, I think it, I think it should be school, comma, district, comma, and community stakeholders. That way you include others in the district who may be, and, and that could be parents, that could be others. So I think that, that leaves it a little broader.
Sounds good. Joyce was saying that she thinks it's important to explicitly say parents.
I think, well, I think we should say students as well then.
Well, school, I mean, schools, they, I would think that would cover. Well, school, I mean, schools, they, I would think that would cover the students in schools, but maybe not. So Don, can you read again, the superintendent will not propose major?
On the, on the.
Oh, I didn't. Not present major initiatives to the board without engaging schools, parents, students. She made me a most impacted, okay.
I think that.
Uh, yeah, for schools, you may want to add in parentheses, uh this covers what you're saying. Uh, schools and add in parentheses, uh students, parents and staff and then close parentheses.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
And do you want and and because I don't know what um typical language you use around, do you say parents? Or do you say parents and caregivers or
Parents.
To be inclusive, parents, guardians, parents and guardians?
I think it would be good to say parents and guardians, yeah.
Okay. And then engaging, okay, the superintendent shall not prevent, present major initiatives to the board without engaging schools with that defined in an um definition in there. And then after the parentheses take the slash out and community stakeholders, is that accurate?
Uh, I would put in comma district and then add community stakeholders, so after school staff with comma district.
District staff.
And community stakeholders, because district could be some central office staff, it could be your nurses in the district, depending on what it is, but it's it's more than just school staff.
And I count my after district as well, okay.
Can parentheses just have commas instead of slashes? I'm being a little picky.
That's right, it's the board's guardrail. All right. This, how does, how does that look to everyone?
Looks good. What about one uh one about um inequity or equity or like?
The superintendent shall not allow inequitable treatment of students?
I heard more it was inequities throughout the district. That it could impact students, but also employees.
Ah, inequitable treatment of.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a student outcome, but um it was definitely something that was brought up. Um, are the guardrails specific to student outcomes?
They are for any operational action or class of actions, so that this is where this is where all those other things can be addressed.
So it can, it can be about how it impacts adults as well.
Yes.
Okay.
So um look at, look at the guardrail five, does that look like what you all have in mind?
It works for me, what do y'all think?
I'm not taking issue with it, the only thing I keep thinking about is um just the environment that we're in and whether this is going to be thrown out anyway, because um I mean, I hope, I certainly hope not, and that and I say if it came up, it came up, but um you know, the word equity is almost like not even allowed in South Carolina, not, not, also um we've got an, yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering what this will look like, like post-election and uh whether the terminology will stand, I I again, I certainly hope it does, but I'm just bringing that up because it it'll be contentious and we should just be prepared.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so is there a different way of saying it without of getting at the value that you all are speaking to? Without using the term inequitable or equity?
So one, one way that I feel like where there's examples, that we don't have equity is sometimes
Can we say like will not allow students subgroups to lag behind or some that kind of thing or like you, the word marginalized and then like student subgroups, those two terms keep coming up for me, just to, to, yeah, I don't know.
Um, how about disparate disparate treatment of students and staff?
I like disparate treatment.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't have an issue, an issue with that, yeah, what do y'all think?
I guess the question for me is, Don, what do you think? I mean,
Well.
you know, that that I I'm thinking about how how do you make that happen? I mean, we all want that and you could put policies in place. But what does that look like to you?
So when when I think about uh inequities in our system, uh I I think um about the student achievement gap, academic achievement gap as an example. So there's, 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 there's so much uh so much inequities here and and uh you just take a look at our Title I schools and in the uh the level of uh experience that our teachers have, the turnover.
Yep.
I mean, I mean, that that is inequitable to our students. And so I I think that's a way to to address this without being explicit with the term, because you're right, it's going to get uh actually shot down.
It will.
And uh and so how do you, how do you um say that we're going to treat kids appropriately? And I I don't know, I don't, yes, about what I thought about this uh so I'm thinking about it from a kid's standpoint, I'm not sure how I think about it right now, I'm not addressing how I think about it by by adults. But for students, we are certainly not a a system of equity.
Well, so some of the, so a couple of these examples where where I think are ways that we've done this, well, like we, the superintendent will not allow underperforming campuses to have principals or teachers who rank in the bottom two quartiles of principal or teacher disapproved performance or
What about something I don't, the superintendent will not allow achievement gaps to persist?
I know, but that's, no, that.
I think, I think one of the things.
Too vague, you gotta, we gotta address the actions that we can, that we can, that he can impact, you know, like the turnover or having our most, um you were talking about, I think our our most seasoned teachers and principals are not at our Title I schools kind of stuff, you know, I mean, that that's inequity.
Mm-hmm.
I think one of the things that you'll get from this one is you ask the superintendent, how do you see this particular guardrail? You'll know when the superintendent creates his measures for this guardrail, how he sees it. So you don't really need to define it for him right now. Uh, if he doesn't see it the same way you see it when he comes back with his measures, then you can adjust the wording as necessary to make it clearer for him, though, here's what we actually meant.
That's a good point.
Does that, does that make sense? Well, I I'm I'm good with that uh, that, but but and and uh that 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 doesn't get to the word the the word, the equity word here, so we still have to put this in 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 terminology that that makes sense.
I like the disparate treatment
I do too.
of students and staff personally.
And I think what you're saying, the things that you're saying, get to that, so.
Okay, you want, is everyone all right with this one as a draft guardrail?
Joyce.
I'm still struggling with, you know, what is that, what is that?
Well, and that's, that's where the superintendent, if you, unless the board wants to define it more, then the superintendent gets to tell you what it is through his interim measures.
Yeah, I appreciate that, uh, Ms. Green, she's trying, uh, so let me just, to that point, let me just uh query, query uh right quick. Uh, Joe, Michelle, Vanessa, do you think we we could work with this?
I think what's missing from.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like saying we aren't already doing it.
We're not, we're not doing it.
Can, if you all could have one person talk at a time and into the microphone so we can hear, that would be really helpful, thank you.
We are not doing it.
I do think that's a viable guardrail in that um the expectations we've set, the high expectations we've set for both scholars and adult behavior speaks to that. And I think the onus is on the leaders in the system to hold folks accountable when they're not doing right by students. Um, particularly um when it's known, right? So if it's visible, evident that students are being um mishandled or not being held to a particular standard, we can work, we can address it, I think it is viable, do you think so, Joe?
Yeah. I was gonna say, we've kind of started having these conversations in general, going back to what you said, Ms. Waters, about, you know, just mentioning that word equity, right? And how that just kind of like puts into the environment, something that's really not true. We're not speaking of equity the way that other people may view it, but we had a conversation in cabinet last week, Mr. Kennedy, talking about the expectations like Michelle just mentioned and just rigorous standards, you know, rigorous classroom instruction, that's equity, but most people don't see it that way, so that's a start. Making that a a way that we open the door for the conversations, and I think if we do that, then that gives us a platform to kind of have some deeper conversations about equity in general, but I do think we need to really keep it simple at this point, talking about the expectations as far as instructions concerned, because that's an equity issue in our district.
So I don't know if this, if it's okay for me to bring this up, I had a guardrail I wrote down at some point that I wanted to ask to make sure we've already, whether we've already addressed this. And this was about financial literacy, I I think that, so just for the trainers to know, those, the state legislature passed a law that says we have to have a financial educational course.
We will.
Right, so and and so I said, don't wait for the state to start implementing a rigorous financial education program, that we shouldn't wait for it to happen, that that we need to go ahead and be proactive, I guess, this, or or is that already in place?
Well, it's in place, but also I think that's a very temporary, because once they do it, then it's done, you know?
So they're going to create a course for us?
The course is, that's what Ms. Simmons said earlier, that the course is actually, yeah.
But it's an online course that students have to take?
The information I received last week was that with the um incoming ninth graders, starting next school year, they will be required to um earn a half credit of financial literacy um to graduate. And so they did not allude to virtual or online.
Got it.
But um that's starting for the upcoming school year, so that would uh make sense for this.
Okay, and I guess I don't want to settle for some minimally adequate course. I don't know, I don't, I want us to address this because the students are really asking for it and I I've felt like we've heard that from parents as well, that they want their students to be able to take care of those kinds of issues. But did we already address this when we talked about the soft skills issue?
I think we're addressing it there.
That's what I was, that's what I was going to suggest is, again, keep in mind that under the soft skills issue, you're going to have the superintendent telling you how he's going to measure um progress around that guardrail. And so what was just suggested around the financial literacy course and the quality of it might be a way of addressing it.
Yeah.
If y'all are. No, my reference, my reference to the soft skill included that as an example. Um, so I thought that was, that had captured it, but.
I just wanted to make sure that 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 we feel like that's, that we're all on the same page, yeah.
Yeah.
Well. I mean, I I'm assuming that uh that the the state is developing the course now or going out to uh, you know, to to procure. So we won't know until they do that how rigorous it is, but I do know across the state because um in the superintendent's roundtables up in Columbia, this comes up, and so it's it's a statewide issue. So my assumption is that SCDE is paying close attention, enough attention to it, then make sure it's it's uh, it um prepares our kids.
Good, good, okay.
I just wanted to, if I can, um, bring up, Lauren had to sign off, but she did text me some, some things that she wanted to make sure we paid attention to. Um, one that I don't see up there is culture, like around um and it, it, I know we talked about this when we were in like the workshop. Um, but staff culture, culture throughout the district being a piece. She also mentioned um teacher supports, I know we hadn't said anything about that. Um, and then high expectations, um the rest of them I think we've addressed, but high expectations, culture and then teacher supports were ones she wanted to call out.
So.
Uh, it's just on the one with high expectations, I think that's captured, would be captured under the disparate. And Joe alluded to this a few minutes ago, we have already started working on that, and we will capture that under the disparate uh guardrail.
Okay.
Is the staff, is the culture uh um specific to staff or is it? Um.
Yeah, so I know, so she didn't, she did not elaborate, but I can go back to a conversation that she and I had. Uh, where we talked about it really, really district wide, so like there is no at this moment, like employee satisfaction survey that we know of, maybe one exists. But like, we don't really know how the adults in the system are doing, who have to then develop the students in the system. Um, and so I think that is where the focus of it was.
Okay, it's a clue more than teachers too, other staff members and.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be.
Like, there is no um way to assess whether or not we're meeting expectations with the people who work in the system.
Okay.
Um, on the panorama survey, I mean, we do get um um adult, um they'll stick that survey, right, and uh, well, not right, I know we do, and uh.
The state survey as well, measure satisfaction, um how uh satisfied are you with homeschool relationships? How satisfied are you with the, you know, administration in the school? So that's at the state level, but we also have the panorama survey that has those elements embedded as well.
And that's, and that's, the the panorama, the panorama survey is by departments, by school, so it's not a a just a district wide, it's disaggregated by uh individual managers can see what his or her staff believe.
And the caf.
Yeah, cafeteria.
Cafeteria workers take it and, I mean, like anybody, best drivers, like how are people being treated?
We want to know about them too.
So, so what that, what that might mean then is if the board were to write a guardrail around um employee of that the superintendent will not uh shall not allow um uh culture of low employee satisfaction, I don't know, I, it, there might be better wording, um then then that might cause the adult behavior change such that those, the other staff that currently is not given the panorama survey is given opportunity to um to fill that out as well, um that would uh, so that's something to think about. Um. I mean.
Do an employee survey and then include our employees. I mean, if that's depending on, I guess, what the, what the 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 um the motive is for the employee survey.
So I'm wondering if if this is one of those things we can kind of like get back to you all on, because I'm wondering if panorama could be extended to those individuals instead of developing something different or new, right? Because they do ask about well-being as a part of that panorama, panorama survey for the adults, so I don't know, we may want to look into that and see if we can just extend that versus trying to look for something new, that's the point I'm trying to make.
That would make sense to me.
It definitely makes sense to me too.
So culture, what were the other?
Um, teacher supports is the only other one that they, they said high expectations is under the disparate treatment piece.
I think that the teacher support, something that came up was like protecting planning time, you know, uh, and professional development opportunities, I think that was the kind of support, but and I also think this is sort of an underlying current that didn't necessarily come up, but the fact that our teachers end up having to buy supplies for their classroom out of their own budget, out of their own money, and there, there's I'm not sure how to get to that, like don't neglect that teachers need, it's more than what they get paid. It's, it's about not having to use their own money and try to get a tax refund.
Well, that, but that would be covered, I think, in in this one that we're just doing about culture and yeah, I think that would, I think, I mean, that's all, all overall satisfaction. I mean, one thing that I, that came up in some of the ones I did too, and I've seen this in the gosh, twenty-five years that I've been around here is there is a group of teachers who give us a lot of feedback, but then the, then so many who are who are afraid of, I mean, they'll, they'll say, I'm I'm afraid of retribution, I can't tell you what my issue is because I'm afraid of retribution, I'm like, who's gonna, you know? But anyway, so I I would, I would hope we would address that through the culture.
So, so, yeah, so one thing, so uh on that, with teachers specifically, like in in the leadership, expanded leadership team meeting last week, uh, I think you guys were there, where we talked about, we had the uh, the presentation, we had Mia Pace at the end, I talk about all the things that we think that that we, we, the district could do to improve teacher supports, uh, including uh planning time, so perhaps we could staff to take that, the teacher part and 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 make sure that's a component of the uh culture here, um, guardrail. Be explicit about teachers in that, as opposed to separate guardrail.
It sounds good.
It sounds good.
Okay, so it sounds like the last guard rail will be around, and, and I don't, I don't think that the wording that we have there is quite right. But we can, unless somebody else has, because we have six minutes left, if somebody else has a suggestion for how to word that, please let me know now, otherwise we can make a recommendation to, a recommendation for that to capture what we've heard. That I just can't quite. And, and I think we, what I hesitate around is the words satisfaction or even dissatisfaction, because what we want is a, we want, what you're valuing is is a positive climate and, and a positive and supportive climate. But I think.
What about, what about doing that, instead of this, because we can't, I mean, we'll never.
You'll never.
People that are dissatisfied.
That's why, yes, and that's exactly my hesitation there.
So what did you just say, positive and?
Something to get at that, that concern you brought up about people being afraid of retribution. I think that there's something about that that's just more than not being satisfied, but there's a hostile environment. Won't allow a hostile, hostile culture.
Yeah, and I also think though, that as, as they go back and develop the interim pieces, like, we actually may have an overwhelm, like, let's say employee satisfaction is at forty percent, well, we're striving, and then it'll be to get from forty to forty-eight, or, you know, forty, like, I think, I think there, it may not be positive at the outset, and maybe it is, but like, if it's, if it goes the way we're talking about, and it's not positive right out of the gate, then, then we've just got to.
Yeah, it's something you're working towards, and.
Yeah.
So, so what about employee relations, without, without positive employee relation? Of a, a, a positive employee relation environment?
I really like that, keeping that word culture in there though, because it's a culture of the whole district.
Culture of the industry.
I didn't, I didn't eliminate culture.
Yeah.
I didn't see it up there.
Culture and climate.
Oh, yeah.
Culture and climate, without providing positive employee relations.
How about, how about the superintendent shall not allow a negative or unsupportive staff culture?
Oh, that's good, yeah.
So I would ask though, we have four guard rails that have been completed, and all of them says the superintendent shall not, I'm wondering if we could turn this one around to make it superintendent shall.
Nope.
They won't let it.
It has to be shall, not, it has to be negative?
It has to, because that gives you the freedom, it's about honoring values, and giving the superintendent freedom to, to do other, to define what negative, yeah, it's, we don't do directives.
I have a question about teachers, specific, well, maybe in principals, selection and placement. Because of, and I don't, I, I mean, I'm not sure how to address it, but my concern is that the teachers, the high quality teachers, and I don't mean that all of them aren't, are also in the high performing schools. And so, how do we get to, I mean, because, you know, you award or reward your teachers that are doing well by letting them have the assignments that they want. But is there a way to, the Title I schools are the ones that we probably have, I'm guessing, the higher turnover? And so, that, I mean, I'm not sure what my question is, but I think y'all understand what I'm.
Yeah, so that, so you could write a guard rail to address placement, so that, around, and I think it was one of our, it might have been one of our samples, actually.
Yeah, there's an example that's like, don't allow low performing, like. No, don't, there are some, there are some districts that have one around the idea of don't allow.
Well, it's new teachers.
Teachers, no, well, our teachers, our principals who are at the lowest percentage of performance in the district to stay in a underperforming school. So that, that's a similar, yeah, that's one.
But I, I think on that one though, I would question the, this hour, the district's effectiveness about teacher evaluation, because I think it's over ninety percent of our teachers are rated.
Right, it's just like the disciplinary system thing.
So, the teachers are what now?
They're, they're rated, rated, oh, over ninety percent are rated high, whatever, I don't, I don't remember what those.
So we, we need to.
So, we are at four o'clock. I want to share, I want to share the guard rail screen one more time, just to ensure, just to see where we are. Kim, are you able to share that screen? Okay. Is, so, was there an interest in talking about placement of teachers and principals? Or are we not pursuing that?
We should pursue that.
Then which one are you willing to give up?
Oh, child, wait a minute now.
You get five.
Okay, we use us, use it as a strategy.
The superintendent sure could use it as a strategy if he, if that's what he chose to do.
Yeah, guard rail four, maybe, because that goes to disparate treatment of students by not giving them access to high quality teachers.
Yeah, that, but the one thing I'm going to tell you is that, and what I was going to ask you also about number, guard rail number four, since staff is being addressed in climate, and there's only three measures per guard rail that you get, would, do you still want, and staff on guard rail four?
Yeah, I, I, I'm personally okay with changing it to just students.
Me too.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Are we saying that, that not allowing disparate, disparate treatment of students? That making sure high quality teachers are everywhere would be something that would be the strategy that goes with this?
Yeah, we can't tell them that, but we can say.
If he's not bringing that to us, then we might have to be more refined in the language.
Agreed.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Simmons has something to say.
With guard rail four, we wondered, because Mr. Kennedy has emphasized the need for high expectations across the board, and that language that says, treatment of students, perhaps expectations of students.
The treatment and, or expect.
Okay, can we have a, I can't hear.
Could you, could we say treatment, not allow disparate treatment or disparate out, expectations of students? That makes sense.
Yeah, so the staff is recommending that we, on number four, talk about the disparate expectation of students. I mean, are you saying both?
I think expectations could work.
Expectations in general, and, and take that piece out, just have, guard rail number four would be high expectations for both staff and students. And then we kind of word it to where it speaks to high expectations, because it seems like that's where you all are going with this. You know, it could be about the high expectations in the classroom, it could be about the expectation that we have these qualified or veteran teachers in schools that traditionally don't have them, I mean, it's just a.
But I think, I think, even though we don't want to say the equity word, I think even though people don't, don't think they're doing it, we have not, we have had a disparate treatment of students. And we have, we've been inequitable, inequitable in the way we treated students, and so.
It's not just about their learning environment.
That's why I want to say that, because I want it to be, I want to name it and say it.
I like both.
Yeah.
I like both.
Let's, let's have both.
Yeah. So are you guys?
So is it and/or, or is it and?
It's and. I think you need both.
And then, just the, those things in blue, those are just for you to know what, what your value, where those values lie, those may not be, may not show up in the actual, the guardrails are the guardrails without that, those titles. Just, yeah. That's just to categorize your, the values that you have identified.
And are you going to be providing support to the superintendent and his staff to work on the interim goals?
Yeah, we start tomorrow.
Wheels, wow.
So, good, good job, everyone. So the next steps on the guardrails as well are, are, are around the superintendent and his team beginning to figure out those interim guardrails that will further define what it is and what those, how he interprets what you've written into guard rail draft policy. So, that is what, what the next steps are for superintendent and his team for the board. What needs to start happening is, and this might be, and this is for you all to decide, and it might be something that the committee does or starts or brings a recommendation for, but is to start planning for communication to the community around the, you know, what we learned, what I use we generously, what you all learned about the, from their community listening session in the survey, how it was used as far as coming up with these drafts, goals and guardrails, and the next process, next steps in the process toward adoption. So planning out how you're communicating back to the community on, on these steps in the process.
And so that could be in multiple forms, maybe the ad hoc committee should get together and write up some, some messaging for that. Or, you know, oh, you don't have time?
No, 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 I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm, I'm looking at you.
Okay, and I'll make sure Lauren knows that, since she had to hop off the call and hop off the meeting, but.
And let us know how we can support with that as well, and I, and, and such, so.
Right.
You guys did an awesome job.
We will, I just want to say that, so my understanding is that Monday is committee of the whole. We will be looking at the goals and guardrails and the interim goals and guardrails, interim guardrails, is that correct?
Superintendent Kennedy, that's the, the plan is to be working on those all week, this week, correct?
Uh, yes, so we. So, so we have a series of meetings scheduled this week to work on the, the next steps. I, I don't know what, I don't remember what the, the date on the timeline is to present those to the board.
I thought we were going to vote on them, I thought we were going to vote on the goals and guardrails in October. Does it need to go through the committee of the whole, or does it go straight from this committee to the board?
It should go to the committee of the whole.
That's what I thought.
So, I, so, so those series of meetings run from tomorrow into next week. So let me tonight take a look at what that looks like.
We ever had a special committee of the whole meeting? Special call committee?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I mean, I think, why don't you guys look tomorrow, after your schedule is to see if it's doable. Now, if the boards, we, we've got to understand we're not going to have, so we'll have to make sure the boards, and, you know, we're not going to have everything for us to look at on Thursday, you know, they're still working on it. We may get stuff over the weekend of what those interim goals are.
Right, but if it's not feasible to do it in time from Monday, then we need to know that.
Yeah, that's true, we do.
Well, I, I think, I think, I think, I think it's feasible, so, I mean, staff has already been working on some of the interim goals, so it's not like we haven't done any one.
Okay.
You know, on the, on the, at least on the academic ones.
Okay.
All right.
Then I guess we are done with this special call working session.